Meeting is now formally called to order. I'm pleased this evening that we have two presentations that will be brought by Commissioner Gamble and Sheffield. The first one will be to recognize an organization near and dear to my heart, and that's the Cobb Police Athletic League Track and Field Team. Those of you who are here for this presentation, I'd ask that you please join us up front. Thank you. Some of you have been up here multiple times, so I know you know the drill.
Great, well, thank you for being here tonight. And tonight, we would like to recognize these athletes from the Cobb Police Athletic League's Track and Field Club. These athletes have made great accomplishments this season and represented the PAL program and the county with excellence. This year, at the Mark Trail Memorial Day Track Meet, the team clinched the runner-up Class D title. Before we give the awards, Chief Van Hooser, would you like to say anything?
I just want to thank our community and our police department and the men and women who worked so hard in this program, and several of them are up here, and they will, I'm sure, have a word to say, and Deputy Chief Hamilton as well, who's on annual leave today. But just really, an amazing program that year after year just produces not only things like this, but also produces a lot of amazing memories for youngsters in our community and also for the officers that are involved. So it's just a wonderful program, and we thank you, Commissioner, for honoring these fine individuals. So, thank you.
You're welcome. And is Devin Small here? Devin, just so the audience know, he was the MVP. Noah Rogers, are you here? Noah was first place in the nine-year-old boys' long jump and also the 400-meter race. Delano Rogers? He won the gold medal at the Mark Trail Memorial, finishing first place at the AAU Junior Olympic State District Qualifier. Prince Tandy? Prince finished first place in the 11-12 boys' 4x800-meter relay competition and the 11-year-old boys' 1500-meter race. Blake Hunton? Blake's not here, but Blake was, he qualified for the AAU Junior Olympics in shot. Alon Magual Christian? Magual, I'm sorry. He won the gold medal in the high jump competition and also the AAU Junior Olympic State District Competition. Congratulations. Destiny Frank? Destiny was first place in the 15-16 girls' 1500-meter competition. Congratulations. Isaiah Sanders? He couldn't make it. Isaiah finished first in the 17-18 boys' long jump. Jalil Page? He couldn't make it. Jalil finished first in the 11-12-year-old boys' 4x800-meter competition. And Kaislin Girdry? Gidry, okay. They are in Texas. All right. He finished first place in the 11-12-year-old boys' 4x800-meter relay competition as well. And Commissioner Sheffield is now going to help with the others.
Thank you, Commissioner. The following group of students are high school students, and they're not here tonight. They're actually at school practicing for their home teams, but we have Lieutenant Clark, who will accept their awards on their behalf. But the following young men competed in the Nike Outdoor Championship. This is an invitational event for elite athletes that must qualify with specific times in their respective events. They all flew to Eugene, Oregon for this competition and represented the Cobb PAL program on a national level. And those students are Kayden Gidry? Marcus Gidry? Jalen Marsh? Tariq Miles? Eric Singleton? And Devin Clark. And the next set of young men competed in the Adidas Outdoor Nationals. This is also an invitational event for elite athletes that must qualify with specific times in their respective events. And those students are Jeremiah Fredericks? Isaiah Sanders? Malachi Sanders? And Chavik Baskis. Congratulations to all of the winners, and I'll just hand these over to you. In the mic. Would you like to say a few words? He said no. Tanisha will.
Well, first and foremost, just want to say thank you for the support from the Board of Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioner Gamble and Commissioner Sheffield and the remainder of the board for your support of the Cobb PAL program. These kids work really hard throughout the year. All of the kids you see standing in front of you compete from January all the way through May, so they go through a spring season and a summer season. And the summer season is the hardest, and we had a hot, humid summer this year, and they competed very well. I also want to say to Lieutenant Clark, he is the pulse of this program. The kids absolutely love him. Absolutely love him. If he has to tend to his precinct and he can't make practice, the kids are like, hey, where's Coach Clark? They don't want to deal with us. They love Coach Clark. But I also want to say a special thanks to Nicole. She is not a Cobb employee. She is a mom of two of the kids standing up here. And Coach Nicole, well, three. That's right, I forgot you got three. Coach Nicole, you would think as a mom would maybe give more attention to her kids to ensure that they are competing well, but the same level of expectation and effort that she pours into her own, she pours into every kid that shows up to practice. She pushes them, she helps them to understand that it might be hard in practice, but it'll pay off. She pours her heart out, so we sincerely thank you for every effort, every day after work, the travel of taking kids with you and showing up every Saturday and Sunday in four-day meets. She is there. So, we just really sincerely thank you for all of your effort. Coach Angelene? Who's also a Cobb employee. She works in our Property and Evidence Department and also helps us out over at RMS. She's been with us for years. Coach Lee, I believe, is on the way, because he texted me. He's another one of our civilian coaches. This program is held together because of the effort that they put in, so we sincerely thank you for that. And last but not least, we also, I also want to acknowledge our Board of, our Board for PAL, which of course is Deputy Chief Scott Hamilton, Captain Andy Height, Captain Ballard, and myself, and that's it. Thank you so much.
That's amazing. Oh, Coach. All right, we will now move on to our second agenda item. It is to present a certificate of achievement to our Cobb 4H students. For those who are here for this presentation, just ask that you please join us up front for your recognition.
Thank you for joining us tonight, and we'd like to say congratulations to our Cobb County 4Hers who competed at the 4H Southern Regional Horse Show. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulate you on qualifying to compete at the 4H Southern Regional Horse Show in the Hunt Seat Division. We applaud you for your outstanding performance and for representing Cobb County. We are incredibly proud of you and your achievement and wish you all the best in your future endeavors. And this goes to Avery Hennard. And then Emma Bear also competed, winning the state in the 4H, in the horse project for district project achievement and earning Master 4H status. Congratulations. Josie Johnson, who is not here tonight, qualified to compete at the 4H Southern Regional Horse Show in the Hunt Seat Division as well. And Venya Guajal? She competed, or I'm sorry, she became the state 4H president, so we recognize that your leadership skills are acknowledged throughout the state by your peers, and we look forward to you serving as the ambassador for the Georgia 4H throughout the state's various events, including the Sun Belt Agriculture Expo, Georgia National Fair, the 4H Foundation Gala, and more. Thank you for representing Cobb County. And lastly, Sendia Rushis? We are congratulating her on winning the state in the Human Development Project for the Georgia 4H Project Development. We applaud you for your outstanding performance.
I just want to congratulate these hard-working 4Hers. I know school is getting ready to start, but these 4Hers have been working so hard throughout the summer, studying their various projects, riding their horses, practicing, practicing their public speaking skills, and we cannot be prouder of this group of students. Thank you.
All right, that concludes our presentations for this evening. Next up, we will have a number of public hearings before us. The first one will be brought by our DOT Director, Drew Ressler.
Good evening, Chairwoman Commissioners, County Manager. We do have a public hearing this evening. A project has been identified to improve multimodal connectivity, safety, and operations at our airport over on McCollum, at the intersection of Cobb Parkway and McCollum Parkway at Kennesaw-DW Old 41. Board of Commissioners has adopted resolutions authorizing submissions of two different grants, one to the Atlanta Regional Commission for Transportation Improvement Program grant funding, as well as one to the U.S. Department of Transportation for a raise grant application. In accordance with state law, the Board is required to conduct a public hearing prior to expending county funds of $100,000 or more to employ an independent consulting or consulting firm, or to conduct an independent study or survey. Notice of public hearing for this project was advertised in the Mary Daily Journal on July 1st, 8/15th, and 22nd. Therefore, the Department recommends the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more for transportation planning and engineering services for Cobb Parkway at McCollum Parkway, Kennesaw-DW, Old 41 Highway Realignment, Project Number B2541.
Thank you, Drew. For our public hearing, we accept an unlimited number of speakers who can address the specific item at hand for a total of three minutes. If anyone is here who would like to speak to this item, you may do so at this time. I'll go ahead and declare the public hearing open.
Good evening.
Oh, good evening, Commissioners. My name's Craig Harfoot, and I wish I had gone there and got all the information about this project, but the thing is, this is how they all start off, like Lower Roswell Road project and all, and they're not transparent. I mean, they haven't drawn the plans yet, because they want to spend a million dollars to draw the plans, but we don't even have a clue why they're spending it, you know? And that's, you know, it says over $100,000, and I just think there should be more information available to the public, because there's a reason that the law says you have to have a public meeting, and we just don't see the bad news that comes till later in the end. And as far as the road companies and the project managers running the SPOLOST and all that stuff, they're not transparent at all, and I just would hope you would do something to make them more transparent. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers for this agenda item and this item only? Seeing that, the public hearing is closed, Drew. Do you mind us? I have a follow-up question. Thank you. If a resident would like to learn more about a project, or particularly about this project, how can they do so?
Absolutely. So the next steps for this project, once this public hearing concludes, is there will be an RFP out on the street for, to bring in a consultant to help us with scoping. That'll look at, that scoping, the scope of work within the scoping will include looking at traffic analysis, various business, businesses in the area, traffic patterns, the connections that need to be made, the airport operations that I mentioned earlier. But a significant portion of this scoping and any scoping of this nature will be robust public outreach, so that'll include direct mailers to request those in the area come and provide us that feedback, as well as public information, open houses. And an example of this is a scoping study that we have ongoing right now on Noonday Creek Trail, that will have a public information open house tomorrow night, where we have an opportunity to just hear from the public what their opinion about the project, the need and purpose, and really anything else related to the project. So we will have significant public outreach for this project.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And the RFP, that will be posted online?
That's correct.
Okay. And will that be posted under DOT or Cobb County Procurement?
It'll be posted through Cobb County Procurement.
Okay, just want to make that clear for our speaker, that there are multiple ways to get engaged and to learn more about the project. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Drew, we have a question from our Board to you with respect to the project.
Drew, there had already been some outreach about this project area, correct? Starting back in 2017 or in that timeframe?
There had been some traffic analysis that showed what the opportunity was in terms of the connections, coordination with a stakeholder committee that included representatives from the county, as well as the City of Kennesaw and some others, some others in the public. I don't know the scope of public outreach during that, if it was included, traffic, more than just traffic analysis, I was not here at that, at that time. But I know for this, to go through the federal process, there's a heavy emphasis on public outreach, which will be included in the scoping.
Right. I just wanted to make the public aware that this is a project that's actually been going on for about five years now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other comments or questions from the Board? Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
Our next agenda items will be brought by County Finance.
Good evening, Chairwoman Commissioners, County Manager. We have one item of our first, or, sorry, our third public hearing on the 2022 Proposed Property Tax Increase as defined by Georgia law. I just have a couple slides to go over real quick before I ask the Board to open the public hearing. I just want to show the 2021, or adopted, millage as compared to the 2022 proposed millage. You'll notice the general fund millage is proposed to remain flat. The Fire District Millage is proposed to increase from 2.86 mills to 2.99 mills. The Debt Service Fund is proposed to decrease to zero mills as required by law. We have collected sufficient funds within the debt service to pay off our existing GO bonds, so that will go away. The Cumberland Special Service District 2 is proposed to remain flat, and so is the Six Flags Special Service District is also proposed to remain flat. And then just a couple key dates. We did advertise, advertise in the MDJ on June 30th. We had our first public hearing on Ju, July 12th, our second public hearing on July 19th, and then tonight is our third and final public hearing. So with that, Chairwoman, I just ask that the Board open the public hearing.
Thank you, Bill. As the procedure was for the prior public hearing, an unlimited number of speakers may speak to this agenda item and to this agenda item only, and you will have a maximum of three minutes to do so. With that, I'll declare the public hearing open, and we will take our first speaker at this time. To maintain your order, you may just stand there in the middle, and we'll go from there. Ma'am, if you don't mind standing in the middle so you're not blocking those that are seated, or you can have a seat.
Good evening. My name's Craig Harfoot, Madam Chairman, and the millage rate, I still believe you need to roll it back and not take advantage of the fact that the banks just went stupid and loaned $100,000 more on a $200,000 house, and basically, just the relatively small portion of properties that sold in the last year are going to affect everybody, and all the renters and the low-income, and just going to kill everybody. But I did a thing since the inception of the Fed, and in 1912, gasoline was seven cents a gallon. And this is going to show you why this thing's a bust and a bubble. But anyhow, so in 1918, after World War I, it gets 25 cents. It stays that price till '22, and then it goes down, and it goes down to '21, '21, and then 1929, it's still '21. So, energy had nothing to do with anything, and the Fed rate went to 6.0 in 1928, and that's what caused the Great Depression, aside, and the stock market margins, but it's all about how easy money is, and the Fed has their fingers all over that. So Hoover gets blamed for it. All through World War II, it's still 23 cents a gallon. We had rationing, and so there was no, they didn't allow any speculation, they didn't allow it to be run up. But it, the next big spend event for America was the Vietnam War. We spent $141 billion in 14 years, and it was started with police actions when I was in junior high school, read it in our school papers, a police action, Kennedy start sending troops, advisors. But anyhow, it gets, you know, and it goes to Johnson, goes to Nixon, the war's still going on, gases, for that whole timeframe, went from 31 cents to a whole whopping 35 cents, and then 36 cents. By 1975, Nixon takes us off the gold standard, but the thing that changed was the Fed funds rate went from three, four, it just flopped around, it went to eight, 7.7, and gas went to 53 cents. And right there is what killed it. I mean, it basically set us up, and when Nixon gets kicked out, this is when it really changed. Ford, his vice president is none other than Nelson Rockefeller, the son of John D., who basically, Standard Oil-
Mr. Harfoot, I'm sorry, you're three minutes up.
-reckoned this thing from day one with monopoly on fuels.
Next speaker.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jim Jess. I'm Chairman of Franklin Roundtable, along with my colleague Lance Lamberton of Cobb Taxpayers Association, sent you all a letter, which hopefully you've had a chance to look it over, but I just wanted to mention a few things tonight, and as you know, our fellow citizens are going through some tough times. Gas has increased dramatically, and it alters how people spend their money in their households. And so, I guess, seeing the fact that there is no rollback in the millage rate causes me concern, and I think some of our fellow citizens some concern, because we've got to deal with less, and maybe the county should consider, you should maybe deal with a little less. Roll back the millage rate a little bit, and, you know, one of the proposals, I know we've, you know, it's being talked about, increasing starting pay from $11.50 to $17 an hour. I realize you want to attract new employees and get the right kind of people to work for the county, I get that, but that's kind of a dramatic increase. Maybe, maybe think about $15 as, as kind of a compromise there, and then use the balance to roll back millage rates, because the people out here are hurting, especially people on fixed incomes, especially people that, you know, do not have large increases in their salaries each year. So, so I think, you know, this is kind of a generous approach, when government shouldn't be thinking in terms of generosity to itself, but helping its citizens cope with really, you know, the highest inflation we've seen in many years. So I think, you know, not seeing that in the proposal here, it causes a lot of citizens' concern. So, we'd like to see the millage rate rolled back, because a lot of, a lot of the folks here, they're, they're experiencing tax increases, and they're not getting any extra benefits from their county government, but yet, the taxes are going up for them. So, I think austerity measures need to be considered, and I know everybody says, well, we've looked at everything and we've squeezed the county government as much as we can. I'm not sure everybody believes that, there are, there are always places where county government can be more efficient, and I think the citizens want to see more of that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lou Souders, and I'm just a citizen, I don't have a title or anything, but I'm sure we all feel the effect of the high gas, the high energy prices, the cost of food. We're all in this boat together. That's what I would not want to say, equity include, and inclusion, but that's we all together in this. I'm sure we remember 20, 2008, when the housing crisis came, and so many people lost their homes because they were upside down in their mortgages because of real estate going out of, out of a pace we couldn't keep up with. The small banks and car dealerships went out of business. We even had crazy things like cash for clunkers, just, everybody was going crazy then. We need a break, because it's going crazy again now, and it can begin here with this organization, with this group of people here. Otherwise, the money we spend on all these new programs eventually will be unfunded, because big government will get so big that there's no way to fund it all. Forty years ago, my husband and I invested in a duplex, because we knew we would need extra income in retirement. We always were the low- We always with the lowest rent on the cul-de-sac. Sandy rented for night, for 15 years from us, and Linda rented for 12 years. In those years, we accepted late fees, we even gave Linda a, a year to get caught up one time. In all those years, in, in the 15 years, we only went up in rent for a total of $250, because we wanted to keep it so that we could keep the, the housing filled. But in anticipation of having to raise our rent because of, of being taxed on ungained capital gains, on unrealized capital gains, we let them know we were going to have to give a big increase in rent. Sandy moved in with her daughter, and Linda moved to South Georgia. You have the power to lower taxes, the millage rate. You can delay increases in all this. In fairness and mercy, please consider doing this, because all the citizens of Cobb County will benefit from that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll take our next speaker.
Debbie Fisher, East Cobb. In the last budget hearing, I was told that Mr. Volkman received guidance from our county attorney on what proper notice was. It is my contention, it was ill-advised. Notification was not in keeping with Georgia State Statute 48-5-32C1. In the event, and I'll read an expert excerpt, "In the event the rate levied in unincorporated area is different from the rate levied in incorporated area, the report shall include all required information with respect to unincorporated area and incorporated area, and a combination of incorporated and unincorporated areas. That was not done. In consideration, the millage rate will be reduced for those living within incorporated Smyrna, Marietta, and Acworth, while those of us in unincorporated Cobb will unjustifiably be taxed with a .13 millage increase. Transferring the millage rate to the fire fund, you are unquestionably raising the miller, millage rate for the purpose of operations in unincorporated Cobb. Since purpose is not defined, I did a little research and found a response from Florida's Attorney General. The question is directly related to my question. For operating purpose, does the face, operating purpose refer to all funds found within the budget of a covering tax authority? Her response was, "I am of the view that phraseology for operating purpose as employed in the context of Florida's statute refers and relates to conduct carrying all lawfully authorized and imposed functions, duties, works, improvement of the affected county duties, and the millage rate and levy referred to therein is levied for such purposes and embraces the funding of all activities and operations by ad valorem taxation. Taxpayers are justified in our reasonable assumption that our millage would be reduced by .13, just like incorporated Cobb, as approved in the bond fund in 2008. This millage rate wasn't retired, instead, it was transferred to those of us in unincorporated Cobb. You've ignored the law, the voice of the people, and you signed an oath to uphold those very laws that you have ignored. We intend to hold you accountable for that oath you took. Vote no to this increase based on improper notification of a millage increase on the unincorporated Cobb taxpayers." Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take our next speaker.
Good evening, Lance Lamberton, Cobb Taxpayers Association. I want to say that we're not insensitive to the fact that the county is struggling with attracting and maintaining and retaining quality employees, and this puts a lot of pressure on your budget. But taxpayers are also suffering under a very heavy inflationary times. The rate of inflation in our economy right now is, is higher than it's been since 1981, and it's putting a lot of pressure upon taxpayers in Cobb County. If you just keep the millage rate as it is, that is actually in effect a tax increase. We all know that. The county's going to get millions more dollars in its coffers, but the taxpayers are going to have to be the ones to provide that, that additional revenue. But politics is the art of compromise. I think that the consideration, we don't want to be inconsiderate of what your concerns and needs are, but at the same time, consider the needs of the taxpayer, which is why you exist in the first place, right, to serve the taxpayer of Cobb County. A proper balanced position I would suggest and would like you to consider is if you can't make, lower the millage rate to make it a complete rollback, then what about a compromise? What about a 50/50 deal? I think that's reasonable, that is addressing, it's helping taxpayers, but it's also providing you with additional revenues to meet your needs and requirements as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Pamela Riordan, I'm in East Cobb. I've been in Cobb County since 99. Okay, so Atton, A-T-T-O-N, just released the number. Two, the foreclosures have gone up 218% in the first six months of this year, okay? Number one. So if you continue this, you will have a problem next year, no doubt, and you will have people hurting all over the county, even more than they are now. 58% of the U.S. workers worry they can't pay their bills this month. 21% of baby formula is out of stock across the country. There are 3.25 million fewer Americans working today than in February of 2020. That was before COVID, when we had a great president. So these are sourced by Harris Poll, ABC News, U.S. Chamber of Commerce, Fox News, Citizen Free Press, and the Cato Institute. Folks, it's your responsibility. I am here to speak against keeping the millage rate the way it is, because that's a tax increase, and people are hurting in this county. I'm not, because I know ahead of time what's going to happen. I have savings. I own my home. I have a hybrid. So I, everybody isn't like that, though. So the GDP first quarter declined 1.6%. This quarter, Thursday, another, it's going to be another 1.6%. We're in a recession, we're going into depression, I'm going to tell you right now, next year. So buckle up, you know, we have to buckle our belts, y'all being the county have to buckle yours. Thank you for no tax increase.
Thank you. We'll take our next speaker.
Thank you for your time, thank you for your time. Got three minutes, so. I want to say, as a resident of Cobb County, my name's Kenton Fleming, a former professor of engineering at Southern Polytechnic State University, that in 2018, I think it was 18, my property taxes doubled. The millage rate was the same, my house evaluation was not, and it allowed you guys to double my property taxes, and I guess that's you guys right there, the buck stops at your desk. Do I understand correct? You guys had the final say whether taxes go up or down? And so what that did is, I asked my neighbors, did your property taxes double? And they said, no, 5% or 10%. So what the evaluation process does is effectively allow you to tax people's properties non-uniformally, which I think is against the law. All right. And that's all I wanted to say. In a society in decline, Isaiah 3:12 says, "To a nation that's turned its back on God, as for my people, children oppress you; women rule over you. My people, your leaders lead you astray." We are a society in decline, and our government has turned into an orgy of every greed and fantasy of mankind. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take our next speaker.
Hi, my name's John Souders, also a Cobb resident. Real issue's not about the millage rates, it's what's the total amount of tax dollars we have to pay, and how the, whether or not it's being spent wisely. I bought my properties at a price my own choosing, there's a contract I made with the county, really, but as I look at the last five years, I've seen a 181% to 212% increase in my income, I mean, our property taxes. I've seen a 35% year-over-year increase. Now, one thing I, I found out at the meeting we had, I guess about a week ago, that's actually a state issue, so I'll be going to whatever I can do to lobby my state legislators to that the, the property tax valuations are actually, it's a state law. So if you didn't know that, you need to deal with your state legislators. I just found that this out at one of the, in the meetings last week, so that's good to know. But when I look at my, my appeals I've done in the past on property taxes, the Board of Equalization always gives the same type of answers, you know, we're on the lowest millage rate in the state, we're the lowest in Metro County, we haven't changed it in over a decade, this is so good, you should be grateful you live with these high property values. Well, that's empty words. You're, you're actually getting to, as has been said before, it's like taxing unrealized stock gains. I'm paying a much higher, when I'm looking at this, 212% higher than five years ago, more than double, my properties. So they're hollow words. What we can do is roll back these things. When I look at the good employees we have that have left for, when in law enforcement throughout the county, when I look at the fact that the Sewell Mill Pool couldn't open because Cherokee County's paying $2 more a lifeguard, these are some areas that are not tremendously expensive, we can increase to keep our public safety and our, our parks and wrecks and things open. But when I look over what I've done, have I used the roads 35% more in the last year? Absolutely not. Have I used the parks 35% more? Absolutely not. These are new, not new tax burdens I'm, I'm adding. In particular, I'd like to say that 62% of our tax dollars for property taxes go to the school board. So that's, that's the biggest chunk by far. So when we see $65 million more come in because of increased valuations, and that they did not turn down the, the, the millage rate lowering, now, I think it kind of ties your hands, I don't know if that's something you can undo as the board, when the school board votes on that, but it would be a much better compromise to take some of that $65 million, instead of putting it into capital improvements that we might not need, up north, I look and see these schools, they brag about, this school's 200 years old, here we tear down and build brand-new ones. Does that mean we're educating our students better? Probably not. I'd recommend we take that 65 million and give most of it back to the taxpayer through lower millage rates, and then let's keep our best employees and encourage new employees by giving us a, a better starting salary. You know, I know that we don't have the old retirement plan for our county employees, so we've got to be attractive to keep our public safety, keep our services going, but I think there's a lot better we can do with our tax dollars. And the final thing I'll say is, I'd much rather see us go to a consumption-based tax model versus a property tax model, where we-
Sir, I'm sorry, you're three minutes, you're three minutes are up, sir.
Gotcha. Those who consume versus who just-
Thank you for your time, thank you.
Yep.
We'll go to our next speaker, please.
My name's William Parker. This is the first time I've spoken here. I've been a resident of Cobb County, lived in East Cobb since 1983, so I'm almost 40 years here now. One thing I want to say, people are talking about gas taxes, for one thing, over the past 50 years, oil companies or petroleum companies and industries have collectively earned a billion dollars a day. So gas price increases are not the fault of government, and I think, I think it's misplaced. Secondly, I've heard a lot of people talk about taxes that they pay, services that they want. I attended a town hall recently, you gave, Madam Chairperson, Chairwoman, and everybody, half the people were complaining about not getting services that they wanted, the other half of the people were complaining about what it cost. Most of the people tonight are complaining about what it costs. You know, I got my tax bill last year, I looked at it, I said, let me pay this before they think they made a mistake. I mean, it costs money to do stuff. People don't want to work for $17 an hour, I don't care what kind of job it is. People can't live on $35,000 a year in Cobb County or almost anywhere else in the United States today. We need the money. The county is woefully short of staff, the county is woefully short of money to just pay ongoing expenses. Police officers need raises, firemen need raises, people who work in regular county jobs need raises. Folks, we really have to retool our thinking, I think. And I say, sometimes in life, you should stick to your view and defend it against all criticism. It makes sense. But sometimes the world is genuinely different than it was before, and at those moments, the crucial skills are the ones that nobody teaches you, and that's how to reorganize your mind and to see with new eyes. And the gentleman was talking earlier about what happened in 1928. You know, I'm in the financial services business, and I know on October 29th, 1928, the Dow Jones average was $68, we closed that day. The country plunged into a depression, stayed there for almost 10 years. Well, yesterday, the Dow Jones average closed at almost $32,000. So things change over time. It happens, and we have to be realistic and recognize that the county needs money, and the only way they're going to get money is from us. You know, I'm, I'm over 65 years old, and I think a lot of people in this room are the same, you know, so to complain about your taxes, if you're that, in that age category, I think is almost criminal. I live in a house that's well in excess of half a million dollars, and I think my tax bill's going to be $1,600. It's ridiculous. I'd gladly pay more tax. In fact, I would probably voluntarily pay more tax, just to make sure-
Excuse me, let's, excuse me, sir, excuse me. Please, there was not commentary during the other comments, and I just ask that there not be during his. Thank you.
Thank you. I realize that what I'm saying is contrary to everything that most of these people are saying in here tonight-
Sir, I'm sorry, your time's up.
Sir, I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take our next speaker, please.
Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing us this time to speak. Appreciate it greatly. My name is Sally Grubbs, and while I am a Cobb County resident, I'm also a City of Marietta resident. But I am going to address a couple of things, because I feel like it's, it's my job. Just a little while ago, a message came out from the, the White House, "Our economy is more resilient," for example, "with respect to food, and the high prices are hitting Ameri, hitting Americans very hard in a way that is different than some places that are experiencing famine. Well, at least we aren't starving to death." That's the bonus, right? I see citizens coming to commission meetings all the time concerning affordable housing, attainable housing, all the catchwords to say, "I need somebody to pay my rent." And there have been thousands and thousands of dollars spent to help people pay their rent. In the meantime, homeowners in Cobb County don't get that benefit. If you own your home, you're on the hook for the taxes, the insurance, the mortgage and everything else, the maintenance and upkeep. And I'm sorry, but when the county appraiser comes out, they don't take into account what your maintenance and upkeep is versus what you're going to have to be paying in your taxes. You're just sought a tax based on the property value. Our property values have increased. Cobb County taxpayers deserve to have a rollback. I have no, look, I'm in industry, and I understand what it takes to hire and obtain employees at a reasonable rate, and we need good quality employees, so I don't argue that point. The point I'm arguing is, every time we turn around, it's to, a sum not to exceed, blah, blah, blah. There are so many things going on in this county, to properly research it and see if it's happening appropriately, there's not enough hours in the day for people to do that. Oh, it's on the website, you go dig and dig and dig, and you have to put pieces of the puzzle together. You may not recall the housing crisis back in 2009, 10 and 11, but we're seeing it again. You may have a short memory, but we don't. Failure to read the tea leaves of the economy led to schools and counties having to reduce spending by reduction in force. The county had to have a reduction in force. So where you're spending that you could take care of employees, you need to look at that. You're full steam ahead on taxing the homeowner, yet you don't acknowledge the looming recession. Just because you refuse to acknowledge it doesn't mean it doesn't exist. Just because you refuse to acknowledge it doesn't mean it doesn't exist. So I really think that, I mean, it's great that Mr. Parker can afford, you know, over half a million-dollar house, and some of you can afford over half a million-dollar house and pay all that tax, but my mother's 94 years old and owns her home, and, no, she doesn't pay school tax, but the increase in property value has an effect on the bottom line, and you need to take things like that into consideration. There are people-
Ma'am, I'm sorry, your time's up.
Thank you.
Leslie Davis, East Cobb. I am a homeowner in Cobb County. I have homestead exemption. I'm here to lend my voice to those who will be hurt if the rollback millage rate is not adopted. For a few years, post the 2008 recession, I rented out my first home until the sales price could recover. Not adopting the rollback millage rate was a huge blow to our budget each year. The Federal Reserve has destroyed the value of our dollar and made savers into losers. Naturally, some everyday people who manage to scrape up a little bit of extra money use it to buy rental properties and supplement their income. There is no margin for extra taxes, so they must pass that cost on to their renters. Governments produce nothing and are never in fear of losing business if they do not satisfy their customers. So of course it makes sense that those in government would just think, "It'll come from somewhere." They don't actually care where it comes from. They have their goons who will use force, up to and including death, to get what they believe they are owed. Every government employee hired or who receives a raise should understand what that means. It means that people who can't afford a house are paying more and more in rent for your cushy government salary. Don't assume people in Cobb County want what you think they want. Let's try a voluntary contribution system where citizens pay à la carte for the items they find value in, and we'll see very quickly how wrong you are in your assumptions. I'm asking you to adopt the rollback millage rate for the sake of your hurting constituents.
Donald Barth, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I think one of the things I want to thank you right now for serving, it's a tough job. You're never going to make everybody happy, but you want to be fair and inclusive. So you've got to spread this tax around. East Cobb can't pay it all. It just can't do it. You saw the same thing happen in Fulton County, and they divided the county. So you're going to do the same thing if you keep forcing people that can't do this any longer. I live in 30067. I live in a cracker box. Our houses are running right now at over $300 a square foot. So y'all are saying, "Ah, more money for me." It's fake money. It's fake. It's not going to be their loan. The problem is, we're talking about $16 to $17 an hour minimum wage. That's not a problem, that's the best thing I've heard out of you. It means you care. Seriously. See the policeman over there? He needs more money. The fireman needs more money. They're called essential workers. I can't do their damn job. You can't do their damn job. I can go dig in the street, but I don't want to. You're going to offer more money, and you're supposed to. If you can't hire somebody in at that wage, you need to find out what it's going to cost you. But you've got to roll back somewhere else. You can't just keep shoveling it on. It's going to come to an end. Hey, there was a time a policeman only had to worry about a Saturday night special. Now he's got to worry about assault weapons. There was a time a policeman only directed traffic, they stood out there with a whistle. Now they have to go into the school systems and save the kids. They have to do that. It's a very important job. The firefighters used to just go stay at the firehouse, put out a fire occasionally. They got to do traffic control, they got to pick you up on the side of the highway and bandage your bloody selves. Things are changing, and at least you're admitting to that, but you have to find a way to cut back. Don't cut back on the salaries of essential people. You've got to have essential workers. Maybe you don't need as many secretaries over there. You know, you pay somebody $17 an hour, and you don't expect to see five of them leaning on a shovel. You'd hope that one of them would get up off his butt and take the shovel and do what you're paying him. But now you're paying them $10 an hour, apathy, they don't care. So they're going to lay down on the shovel. You're not getting your money's worth. But you've got a tough job right now.
Sir, I'm sorry, your time's up.
I want to thank you.
Thank you. We'll have our next speaker.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners. I'm Denny Wilson from South Cobb. If you guys remember, I came before you last year because you raised the 40% assessment, I mean, the 100% assessment, well, the 40%, 100% appraisal and the 40% assessment value, only for South Cobb. And I came before you guys last year, and I stated that it was only for South Cobb. East and West Cobb didn't get that increase. Only South Cobb got it. Now, there are 246,000 homes in Cobb County. I ordered a report from the Tax Assessor's Office last week, and I sat and I looked at the subdivisions, the homes, and I found out there's 246,000 homes in Cobb County, and that doesn't include the trailer parks, and it doesn't include the commercial businesses. If you guys continued this every year, to raise this without rolling back the millage, that's additional money that the county is getting. And last year, mine went up by 20, I think it was $23. And this year, it was a minimum increase, but for some seniors, it would be a lot. It could be the difference between them getting medication and them not getting medication. And as you know, we've got a problem with Medicare right now. You've got seniors who are breaking pills in half because they can't afford to get a 30-day supply, so they're getting a 15-day supply, breaking it in half so they can, so they can at least have their daily medication. Not to mention the price of insulin for seniors who are diabetic. And I know this is about the millage, but I want to address the hourly pay increase because I think people need to learn the difference between a living wage and a minimum wage. And I don't think that a lot of us understand that. $17 an hour is only $35,000 a year, and that is right above the poverty level. $15 an hour is $31,000 a year. The living wage would provide people means to take care of their family. So I think what the county should have done in those town halls is you guys should have separated the difference between a living wage and a minimum wage, because I don't think a lot of people understand that. Nobody can raise their family off of a minimum wage. And I don't think, me, myself, I don't think a living wage of $17 an hour is a lot. Again, that's only $35,000 a year. If it's passed on to me as a taxpayer to help someone take care of their family-
Ma'am, I'm sorry, your time's up.
-I don't have a problem, because I've been there, so I know.
Thank you. We'll have our next speaker.
I haven't been here in a while to this new commissioner, and what I'd like to say is, you know, when Jesus-
Sir, please help us, sir, thank you, please help us in stating your name for the record.
My name is Bishop Perry Price.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm over 10,000 churches. But the thing about it, I haven't been here since the, for a long time in the county. But we're talking about millage rates and tax money and all that, Cobb County's got more money in the present. I've seen where y'all have done a lot of buying a lot of property, doing a lot of stuff, so I don't know, understand why y'all want to go after these people, talking about a millage rate and charging people all this money. And also, I want to say one thing, and I'm going to leave it alone. I'm also looking at the chairman's seat, and if I come chairman, it won't be no taxes.
With that, we'll take our next speaker.
My name is Bill Dickman. I hope I get that kind of applause. I understand later tonight you're going to address, consider spending a half a million dollars on a program called the UDC.
Sir, I'm sorry, we have public comment for that? This is a public hearing only addressing the millage rate?
It's still an expense that we should maybe consider to affect our taxes as we are discussing presently. I might add, you may want to just delay some of these things unless they're truly life and death matters. That's the point I simply wanted to make. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers for this public hearing? Seeing none, our public hearing is closed. Bill, if you don't mind approaching.
There was a lot to unpack for what was stated during the public hearing. I took a lot of notes. I'm going to see if any other Commissioners have any comments or questions, and then I'll hopefully be able to compile some of the ones that I did have questions or comment regarding. Thank you. So I'll start with Commissioner Danby.
Should we not be having this under the tab before we vote on the millage rate, which is Agenda Item Number Five, since this is just a public hearing? I guess that's a question for Mr. Rowling.
This is the public hearing, but usually, at this point in time, the chair brings the speaker, the presenter back up for any questions from the board. And so I guess that would be this opportunity for you to ask any questions to the presenter.
So to that, I do not have any questions for Bill at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson?
Just appreciate all the public comments, and I think you did take copious notes, so we'll just relay it that way.
Thank you, appreciate it. Commissioner Burrell.
For clarification, I do have a few questions that may be something that you were going to ask as well, I don't know.
Okay.
A few years ago, we have reduced the Fire Fund twice, and at our meeting, I believe in February of '21, it was a consensus of this board that when the Parks Bond debt expired, we would shift that over to the Fire Fund because of their, because of what we had borrowed from them in the past, and also because it's needed there. The Fire Fund budget is separate from everything else. It's not in the General Fund, it's totally separate, and it encompasses their whole operations, their salaries, everything, capital, equipment, everything, and the Fire Fund budget is paid for out of the Fire Fund. So, again, for clarification, because there's, one of the speakers is continually saying that we did not advertise as an increase, and we did properly advertise as an increase, and this has been discussed publicly for two years when the debt service retard was expired. I just wanted to get your two cents in legals as well on the increase.
Yes, Commissioner. To your point on the advertisement specifically, yes, we did follow the Georgia guidelines, we did confer with the county attorney to validate that we did, in fact, comply with those guidelines. And so I'll let Bill Rowling, our county attorney, speak to that as he's reviewed that and worked closely with our office on the advertisement and the millage rate.
That's correct. We've reviewed it a number of different times. We've considered a Florida Attorney General opinion, but we don't, it has no weight here in Georgia. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sheffield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill, I just need for you to provide some clarification on the correlation between the property tax increase and the millage rate, for those that may be joining the hearing for the first time, or those that may be tuning in, because with the comments shared tonight, there is a correlation being made between the property tax, property tax increase and the millage rate increase. So if you can just kind of provide some clarification there.
That's, thank you, Commissioner. And yes, so as we're reviewing the millage rates, and I actually asked to put up the slide of the millage rates themselves, but the General Fund millage rate is, again, proposing to remain the same, but because we are not rolling that back, because we are collecting more than we collected last year, we legally have to advertise a tax increase. So even though we're not changing the millage rate, that we do, and we will collect more money than we did last year, we do legally have to advertise. So that's when we talk about a tax increase, that's exactly where it comes from. So even if the board chooses not to change the millage rate and adopt the 8.46 that we had in 2021, it is still legally considered a tax increase. So that is the big key there. Now, there's a variety of different properties that will come into play there. You have primary residence, which has the homestead exemption, you have commercial properties, which obviously does not, you have rental properties, which do not. So there's a lot of different factors that come into that, but because we legally will collect more revenue from property taxes, we do legally have to advertise a tax increase.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Bill, a gentleman stated during his comments, the process around valuation of properties, and another speaker spoke about inequity regarding that process. Can you address how we do value properties when it comes to property tax assessment?
I cannot speak to that, that would be the Tax Assessor's Office.
Is it Tax Assessor here, or someone? Thank you.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners.
Good evening.
So the question, as I understand it, is you'd like an overview of how we value real estate, is that correct?
Yes, there are some comments made with respect to the inequity of how properties are valued, and just the general process of using the value of properties to obtain income from the county as well.
Sure. So as part of our selection process in determining when it's time to revalue a neighborhood, we look at what the sales are in the neighborhood compared to what the value we currently have. So that's one avenue of finding out if the neighborhood is ready for a revaluation. So if sales are up here last year, and our current value is here, then it's time to revalue the neighborhood. So that's part of the uniformity process, which is in the law, and that has to be taken into consideration. So we take a look at neighborhoods, what the sales prices are, and then how are those sales affecting properties? So then, we bring the neighborhood's properties up to the sales of like properties. So we go and look at what have homes in your neighborhood sold that are like yours, and make the necessary adjustments, because naturally, two properties are not the same, there's always some differences. In regards to commercial properties, we look at, are the income producing, and that's part of valuation? What are the rents that are being generated on that real estate? But I think the question is in regards to residential properties, and are they uniform? And the answer would be yes. We do look at those statistically and make sure that they are uniform in regards to other properties that are in their neighborhood.
Okay. And can you speak to the state's role in that process? Could Cobb County opt not to value or revalue properties?
Sure. Sure, the state has laws in place, 48.5, and then there are a number of laws that are in those code sections that apply to how we do our business at the Tax Assessor's Office. If we were to do nothing at all, if that were to happen, we would be penalized. The state of Georgia has laws- The state of Georgia has laws, they come in and review us every three years to make sure that we are keeping up with market. Additionally, the Department of Audits reviews our tax digest to make sure that we're maintaining current fair market value, and they as well can penalize us if we are not maintaining market value on properties.
Okay, thank you. Towards the end of public comment, there was a comment shared about additional assessment on South Cobb properties. Can either one of you address that?
We revalue properties using the selection criteria that I mentioned. A number of factors go into that. I can assure you that valuations were done across Cobb County. It was not by one area.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Steve before he leaves? Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Appreciate it. I don't want to patronize anyone who may know our process around the homestead exemption, but sometimes I feel that it still needs some comments around it, so people can understand what possible belief may be available if you do own a home here in the county.
So Steve, do you want to take that, or you want me to give a shot? All right, you're gonna chime in if I misspeak, so he's gonna keep me honest here. So the homestead exemption is on your primary residence, and it is the exemption that you apply for when you purchase your home, and at that value, your home is frozen. So the general fund portion of your tax bill is set on that value. So if you are reassessed, that value does not change. So that is on the general fund portion. So I'm gonna let Steve add anything, or correct me if I misspoke.
I think that's exactly right. Nothing was left out. It's only on the county general portion.
Okay. So then, for the fire fund, there is no homestead exemption?
That is correct. Nor is there for the debt service fund.
Or for the debt service, which we're bringing to zero.
To zero.
For this particular budget. But for the fire fund, an increase pertaining to the county may have been realized on the fire district fund.
Yes.
If you have a homestead exemption.
That is correct.
Okay. I'm not going there. Thank you. Okay, those are all the more questionable things I wanted to address. As Commissioner Gammel stated, we will vote on the millage, and there will be opportunity to address some of the other comments there.
Absolutely.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions or comments for Bill? We have two other questions, I believe, from Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you. There was also a comment mentioned about the school's millage rate that the school board sets as a separate entity. What authority do we have in relation to the school board millage rate?
As the taxing authority, they'll go through their process to set their millage rate, and then the board will validate and approve their millage rate. So we will have that on the agenda tonight, but they are the ones to set their millage rate, and we go behind them and validate.
Okay. And I think there was also a question about, you know, with the fire fund being something that's reimbursable with incorporated areas around Cobb, that was something referenced in a previous hearing as well, that as a part of your presentation, in terms of the expectation and where those, where that extra fund, where that extra amount would be realized as a part of the millage rate increase? Perhaps you could share some more on that, too?
Sure. And a lot of that is really driven by our debt service fund. If you remember, going way back, we had a debt service millage of .33 mils, and then it was reduced to .23 mils, and then again to .13 mils. So as a part of that, that is gonna be solely dedicated to our 2008 Parks Bond, which we have now collected enough funds to pay off. So we are legally no longer required, or no longer able to collect that millage rate. Starting back at the last reduction of the fire fund, we've had a couple of key changes that have happened since then. So I believe that was in 2018, I believe, was the last reduction that we had. And at that time, we've had a couple of new programs that have added. So we've had the stepping grade for public safety, police, and fire. And during that presentation, I remember Director Crowder specifically said, "The fire fund has enough to implement the study, not to sustain it." And as a part of that process, since that reduction in the millage, the fire fund has deferred most of their capital replacement. So we began having conversations almost immediately to say, "This is not sufficient for the fire fund. We do have to look at an increase." And then through this year's budget process, we heard directly from the fire fund themselves, the fire department, talking about their needs. So even with this millage, you are not fully funding their request by any means, but you are putting them back to a level that they can go through with routine capital maintenance. And they, so just to kind of give you an idea, that, again, does not fund, fully fund their request, nor does the millage rate that's being proposed for the general fund. As we sat through those meetings, we know that that, the request that we have was for the general fund alone, was 133 million increased. Obviously, we're not doing that. We're maintaining the level that we are today. So the fire fund is no different. It is also dedicated by a millage rate, or funded directly by a dedicated millage rate, and, again, not fully funding the requests that were brought before the board.
Thank you. And then with regards to the city services versus county services and the fire services?
Absolutely.
That was also referenced?
So that is a great point. So one of the things that we did look at, and it was actually mentioned by one or multiple of our speakers tonight, the people that live in the city limits that have their own fire service will not be paying fire. They don't pay for fire. And yes, we are shifting that burden to the people who use the fire service. So if you do not receive fire service from the county, you will not be paying the millage rate. And I mean, that's just, that makes sense. The users pay the cost.
And their fire costs are incorporated into their city taxes, which are also voted on by those cities?
Absolutely.
Set by those cities.
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Before we move on to the next votes pertaining to the budget and millage, I want to bring to the commissioners' attention this green sheet that each of us should have received. It addresses the discussion we had during our agenda session yesterday, to have a separate agenda item for the implementation of the class and pay study. And I would like for us to add that to the agenda to be considered tonight. So with that, I move that we add the agenda item pertaining to Cobb County's tax levy adoption to authorize the implementation of recommendations resulting from the study of the county class and compensation structure by Evergreen Solutions. Is there a second to add this to the agenda?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Call the question. Thank you, Commissioners. With that, we'll go back to our agenda item. And Bill, I believe you still have Agenda Item Number Five. And just before you come up, let me just confer with the clerk, since we just added that non-agenda item. I believe that non-agenda item is going to be heard last in this portion, according to what I have here. Okay, so it'll go between the Cobb County tax levy for county-wide school construction bond purposes, and between adoption of the fiscal year 2023 budget. Thank you. Appreciate it. I got you. Okay, so you're not on debt just yet, Glenda, but soon. With that, Bill, if you can help present our next agenda item?
Yes. So our first agenda item for tonight is to adopt a resolution setting the 2022 millage rates for the Cobb County General Fund, the Fire Fund, the Bond Fund, the Debt Service Fund, the Cumberland Special Service District Two Fund, and the Six Flags Special Service District.
Okay. I move that we approve the agenda item as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
And for discussion, I'll go ahead and walk through each of the commissioners. And at this time, there's no comment. At this time, there's no comment from the audience. At this time, there's no additional comment from the audience. Thank you. We have a motion and a second, and I'll open it up for discussion for each commissioner to address the millage, and I'll start with Commissioner Gammel.
So this vote, just so our audience know, is just on the millage rate. It's not on the budget itself. There's been a lot of discussion on how Cobb has the lowest millage rate in the metro area county, but there's never been a discussion on what our millage rate is valued at, which is based on our digest. Per the AJC, 70% of the properties had increased values attributed solely to the changes in the market conditions. Again, we know what happened back in 2008, when the market started to decline, and here we are setting ourselves up again. Interestingly enough, when the millage rate increased 1.7% back in 2018, which a few members of this board were on at that time, it resulted in today, a, well, actually, let me back up. The millage rate increased in 2018 about 25%, but the increase to the digest has gone up about that amount as well. But interestingly enough, our fund balance from 2018 to 2022, when we were just barely meeting the 20%, which was required by our AAA bond rating, has more than doubled, which tells me that we are collecting more money than we need to, to put into reserves for some other funding that is not designated. I know we have some of it designated. Yes, this board passed a policy earlier this year as far as how we look at funding above the 25% mark, yet we just also approved capital expenditures because that fund balance, I think, was close to 46%, Bill?
Sounds about right. Yes, that sounds about right.
So again, we are collecting an extraordinary amount of money with this millage, and given the factors, I agree with many of the public that we need to be rolling back the millage rate.
Commissioner Richardson?
Sure. I do understand we've had a decent amount of conversation regarding the recession. Perhaps you can share what, how that is considered as, and how the budget is designed, and how we do our forecasting on that front as well?
Absolutely. So as a part of every budget process, one of the, obviously, the major factor that we look at is property tax, because it is over 60% of the general fund's total revenue. And we, it is over 90% of the fire fund's total revenue. So we look at those very closely. We work with the assessor's office, and we begin having conversations early in the process. And as a part of our conservative budget process, just to kind of give you an idea, we budgeted around 3%, 3.5% for 2022. The net that came to the county, now, I know everybody keeps saying 12, I think it's 12.46, 12.49, something like that, that's the gross. The net that came to the county was eight. So we budget 3%, 3%, 3.5% conservatively, so that gives us some breathing room if it pulls back. Now, one of the unique parts, and we talked about this, is because it's such a large portion of our overall revenue, it takes us a couple of years before we feel the effects of the recession, because housing, as the tax assessor talked about, they're adjusted to the sales in the area. That is also true when they go down. So as they go down, this, the values are adjusted downward. And because not all values are reassessed each and every year, it takes you a little bit, about two-year period before we saw that. So going back to the '08, it was 2010 before we first saw our reduction to the mill, to the digest. So that is where we have some safeguards and have some additional time to make adjustments. Now, during the '08 recession, one of the first things we look at is, do we have capital that we can defer? And until this year, you only had 3.5 million of undesignated capital that would be available to you to defer. Outside of that is vehicle replacement. So as part of this year's budget, you are looking at increasing capital maintenance for existing county facilities and existing infrastructure. We're not talking about DOT road resurfacing. That's all done through SPOSS. Existing county facilities, $12 million. Property management alone asks for seven and a half. So that just gives you an idea. Think about all the other departments that had requests that were above and beyond what we funded. But with that, you have the ability to defer and pull back on some of those capital projects. As Commissioner Gammel stated, we did $20 million of capital this past April, because we didn't adopt hardly any capital replacement in 2022. So you did $20 million that was desperately needed, and that was done, that is, that is just, again, maintaining existing facilities. So you do have several levers you can adjust as we go into a recession, and that is one of the benefits to the county is going into. However, the drawback is, we're also the last out. So it's two years for us to go in, it's two years later before we recover. So we have to live in that recession for an equal amount of time. Our just, our timetable is simply adjusted based on how our revenue stream is generated.
Okay, and you did touch on what I was gonna follow up with, which was the capital, the capital funds that were put in. These are deferred costs in order to shelter some of the other more critical things that need to be paid for in the county, but this was also critical need and delayed. And we're looking at a lot of delays. I mean, my general thought on this, just to share with the audience, I certainly have a sincere compassionate feeling to a potential increase that may be there. And, you know, I've had many conversations with constituents within the district about how the taxes are structured, how the percentages are broken down, what we're really looking at. And I know I'll be putting out a taxpayers receipt tool for residents to play with as well, so you can see what your actual contribution is to the individual line items. But all in all, we know that there have been some deferred costs over time. And the fact that we were able to see an incredible amount of commercial activity, an incredible amount of new homeownership within the district, we've certainly seen the increase in this part of the budget, because that's where, that's where that increase is really felt. It's not felt off of those that have been living in their homes for a long duration. With the commercial properties, we do understand as well that there will be likely an impact on rental properties. And this is something that I think needs to be addressed in a multitude of ways. It can't be fixed through the tax structure. But we do need to look at our different revenue streams and how we organize our budget, which are conversations that are going on, and looking at where we can create more sustainable lines of revenue. But that's not something that happens overnight. So by keeping the millage rate the same, we're keeping what was the current expectation for those dollars spent to be consistent, while we know we have some critical funding issues that have been deferred for a long time within this county. And while there, while I do have some, as we go into the budget, while there are some nuances to where exactly certain line items should go, the general feeling of the budget and the general feeling of the millage rate, I think, is at least consistent and somewhat sensitive to those needs, and gives us the opportunity to be more prepared going into the next couple of years. So I do hope that those that are passionate about our tax structure and our funding structures will continue to have conversations with me moving forward, because there are some real opportunities that we can embrace. Today calls for actual action, though. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burl?
Thank you. I too appreciate everyone coming out tonight and voicing their opinion. As I stated earlier, the fire fund has been reduced twice. They are hurting, and they need to be revived. Any of you call, if your house is burning, heaven forbid, you want a firefighter there and the services that are provided. Same with police. But the fire fund is its own separate fund, and as we mentioned, it has to cover the personnel, salaries, equipment, capital, the stepping grade. The public safety stepping grade is in the general fund. The fire fund is covering everything, that operations, everything that the fire department does. And we've taken from them, and we've got to pay, we've got to increase their millage. I know that it advertises an increase because we're not rolling it back. I wish we could roll it back, because I know people are hurting with inflation and gas prices and everything else on fixed incomes. But shifting it to the fire fund, the total millage is still at 11.45. And I know you see it on your appraisals because of the housing market, but fortunately or unfortunately, that's not gonna last forever. The last time that we rolled the millage back to match the increase in the digest, Chairwoman Cupid and I were here in 2016. None of the other board members were present. The next year, we experienced a $32 million shortfall in the budget. So I wish there was something we could do, but for fire fund and safety for our citizens...
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sheffield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a few comments that I'd like to share. But I appreciate the public's participation in this process. I appreciate all of the work that, that you and your team, Bill, has done and the county manager and everybody that's been involved in this process. But while I appreciate the comments and concerns shared over the last three public hearing sessions on the millage rate, there were comments made tonight that were wholly inaccurate by some and some that were deeply troubling. Some of the comments were even contradictory even by the same speaker. So on the one hand, and, you know, I'm not attempting to belittle anyone's opinion or belief, but this is just my observation. But on the one hand, there is a desire to roll back the millage rate because people are hurting. So I, I understand that. But then, on the other side of the spectrum, there appears to be a fundamental issue in raising the salaries of some of those same people that are hurting. So I, I can't reconcile that. But contrary to what some may believe, the taxpayers were considered during this process. But, but our first responders and our Cobb County employees were also considered in this process. Comments were made in reference to the financial windfall that the government, that the government will receive. But the taxpayers are the sole beneficiary of those funds. We're not spending money recklessly. The money that we collect on your behalf is spent on your behalf to increase your quality of life, to improve roads, to do all of those things that you all send us emails that you'd like to have fixed in your communities. That's where the money is going. So for those reasons, Madam Chair, I am of the opinion that the millage rate should remain the same.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate the comments and observations of those who are here tonight in our audience and of our commissioners. And I also appreciate the efforts of our finance team, our county manager, the several directors that we have here today, and constitutional officers that have spent a significant amount of time for us to get to this point. Certainly, this is not something that was done without regards to weighing the interest of many and over a significant amount of time. In fact, we've been weighing our budget and corresponding millage since last fall.
Yes.
And we are here today because this board did want to be mindful of, of everyone's concerns. You know, Commissioner Richardson addressed that there have been some matters from the, of the county that have been deferred. And certainly, the commissioners got an airful of that at the top of last year, right when we came into office. We will never be able to address everything that has been deferred, at least not in one hearing. But we can't ignore it either. And it's unfortunate that we do have a board that's being responsive to that at a time where there are signs of us going into a recession. But we also know that our ability to be able to serve the taxpayers, to be able to keep this county going, is requiring us to make some decisions that should we have addressed these things adequately in the past, perhaps we would be making a different decision tonight. So yes, looking backwards is part of this process, but also looking forward and in knowing that there are some unknowns moving forward. And as Commissioner Burrell shared, she and I were both here in 2016 when we didn't have a rollback in our millage. And the next year, we paid a significant price for it. And when we came to the public and asked them which services they wanted to cut, they were absolutely furious with us that we put that decision before them. But we felt that we didn't have a choice. We came back and we increased the millage. And certainly, there were a lot of people who were frustrated by that increase. But even that increase did not address all of the challenges with that rollback. And even when we had that rollback in 2016, understand when we did have the past recession in 2008, which I remember vividly because I was pregnant with my first child and was working for a housing company and got laid off. So I, I remember that quite vividly. But we have never gotten back to pre-recession funding for this county. But things have changed. Our county has grown. The issues of this county have become more complex. And even at the time that we were coming out of that recession, there was a commitment made to roll back the millage rate even at that point. And so while the county was growing, there were cuts being considered and sometimes made to the millage because of the past decision that was made. All in all, is to say, we have probably never really done what was needed exactly at the time because I feel like we continue to pay for things that haven't been done. And we are trying to get to a point where we can take what's before us at the moment without always having to pay for these past inadequacies in funding the operation of our government. Tonight is going to help us get there, but tonight will not be a panacea for it. Nor is tonight the all, end-all, be-all. We don't know what will happen next year. This millage rate is not set in stone into perpetuity. Should we find that different decisions need to be made, we have the opportunity next year to make those decisions. And we expect our citizens to still be as engaged in the process then as they are today. But I can tell you that a lot of work has gone into today. And I believe that we are making the right decision for today, looking backwards and looking forwards, understanding there are a lot of things that haven't been done and there are a lot of unknowns. This board is doing the best that we can to be stewards of your county tax dollars, but to be stewards of the services also that you expect for us to provide. Cobb County is one of the best, I'll argue, the best counties in our state and even in our nation. But we can't continue to maintain it as such with circumstances being the way that they are today within our organization. Rolling it back would only make our county become possibly more compromised than the county that you expect us to be. So Commissioners, I feel confident we're making the right decision. I would ask that we please support the millage rates that are being proposed here today. And I make a motion that we adopt a resolution setting the 2022 millage rates for the Cobb County General Fund, our Fire Fund, the Bond Fund, the Cumberland Special Service District Two, and the Six Flags Special Services District Fund. Is there a second? Did we already do a second? I apologize, Commissioner. With that, I'll call the question. The motion passes 4-1 with Commissioner Gamble in opposition. Thank you, Commissioners. With that, we are moving on to our next agenda item and...
Thank you, Chairwoman. With this next agenda item, I'm asking the Board of Commissioners to adopt the Board of Education's resolution establishing, establishing the 2022 countywide school tax for maintenance and operations of schools at 18.9 mills, the countywide school tax for construction bonds at zero mills, the Marietta property annex from 1995 to 2004 at zero mills, as required by law, and authorize the Chairwoman, Chairwoman to execute the millage resolution for the Cobb County Board of Education.
Thank you. And as you stated before, the school boards set their millage, correct?
That is correct.
With that, Commissioners, I make a motion that we approve this agenda item as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. We'll move on to our next agenda item. Give me one moment, Bill. That will be the green sheet that you have before you, Commissioners. This is to authorize the implementation of recommendations resulting from the study of the county class and compensation structure.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners, County Manager. I'm Glenda Valentine with Human Resources. And before I actually get into the agenda item, I do feel the need to address a misconception that with this study and implementations, that the majority of Cobb employees will be receiving a 19% increase. And that is not the case. The new minimum will move some of our part-time and lower-paid employees to significant increases. And so that kind of skews the overall average. But I just want to emphasize that the majority of Cobb employees will be receiving closer to 10, 10.7% increases. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for allowing us to bring this item forward tonight. So with this item, we are asking that the Board of Commissioners authorize the implementation of recommendations resulting from the study of Cobb County's classification and compensation structure by Evergreen Solutions LLC, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute any necessary documents.
Thank you, Glenda. I move that we adopt this agenda item as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Yes. And I will again go to each Commissioner, one by one, prior to us voting on the motion. Commissioner Gamble?
And while I support this pay study, and I understand we needed to adjust our wages, where I'm struggling with the vote tonight is when I was having one of my updates going through this study, we were told that we were going to be going to a $15 minimum. It was not until I was sitting at a State of the County address with the chamber that I learned it was arbitrarily made at 17, which then, in my opinion, puts this board in a very difficult position. But what is worse is a lot of staff and directors spend a lot of time and effort sitting there, looking at their salaries of their staff, determining where they should fit, how it should be done, and had it all figured out. And then one person upended that and has now, while, again, there are going to be increases, and again, staff, I understand deserves that, it's also going to be hosting other problems that we've addressed through other pay studies. And so we're going to be right back where we were several years ago. So while I support this study, I do not support the political actions that were taken by a member of this board to upend the, the study that the consultants did, that the county paid and the constituents paid for.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson?
It does bring up a question because I know that there had been some additional discussion within staff with the $17 being floated around or referenced. What, have you received, have you received feedback from staff regarding that particular aspect and class and pay impact as well?
On what specifically?
For the $17 minimum.
To be honest, yes. Mixed feedback.
So it's still some discussion around that particular element. And I do understand it is outside the scope of this particular adoption as well. They're just adopting the feedback, the results of the study?
Sorry, I don't understand.
This agenda item, we're just adopting the results of the study?
Yes, I believe that's true.
You're authorizing the implementation of the recommendations resulting from the study.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. That's it. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you. Commissioner?
I do support the pay and class study. I, I know we've been talking about it for several years after the stepping grade for public safety that we did first. And now we're dealing with compression. And hopefully, that will be worked out this year and next year as well. I, I do have a little bit of heartburn with the $17 minimum. The national average is 15. And I also want to make sure that it's not going to cause compression because if you have someone who's been here for a year or two at $10 an hour or $11 an hour, they will get bumped up when the minimum goes to 17 or 15, whatever it's going to. And, but a new hire coming in will be at 17. So how do we, how do we compensate the folks that have been here without, with new people being, coming on at the same rate, the same level of pay? Is compression addressed in here? As I've told, it has been, but for the hourly, is it?
Commissioner, yes.
Are you addressing?
Yes, ma'am. We have considered compression. We have tried to address it for our senior employees. I will not sit here and tell you that a person who's been here for 20 or 30 years, one study shall make up the difference between all those years, perhaps, where they weren't getting colas or raises. It will not. This study would not be a panacea for those kinds of variables that we have to consider when we look at a comp and class study. So let me just step back one moment and really clarify what a comp and class study really supposed to do. And it really looks at what does the market bear? We don't look at individuals in the current positions. We look at if you had to post and, and hire someone in this position today, what would it take to hire that person in? Then we begin to look at those other variables like education, years of experience, time and tenure in a position for employees who are here. And we have tried to communicate that to our employees, to our directors, that when you do a comp and class study, you are looking at what does the market bear. So what we are doing is trying to look at what would it take to attract someone for those vacant positions that we're trying to fill. But in addition to that, how then do we try to compensate for those employees who have been here? And so we try to strike that balance. But to sit here and say that there is equity between someone coming in new and then making up for the 20 or 30 years that an employee has been here, you, you can't look at a study and say, I want to make sure that this person gets, you know, this amount of money because this person has been here so long, I want to make sure they also get equal amount of money for the time and years that they have been here as well. I can say that the employees who are included in this study are grateful and thankful for the opportunity for you all to consider this. I will say for some, it is life-changing. Life-changing. And I would like to, to reiterate what one of our speakers said. I ask how many of you can live on $35,000 a year in Cobb County. It is not a livable wage. Thank you for bringing that up. But we are trying to do the right thing now to try to fix some of our retention and recruiting issues that we're having. So yes, this study is going to try to address some of our long-term tenured employees. But for the most part, in just about every comp and class study, it really does benefit that lowest-paid employee the most. I hope that answered your question.
Yeah. But I'll leave it at that. I do have one more question for Bill. The difference in the amount of 15 overall than 17 is how much of the study?
Well, I know we, we've had several revisions and we can, had a very fluid process. So as we had the original projections versus today, I believe the original was around, and Glenda, you can, maybe if you remember, I know the final is at $22 million for the $17 an hour minimum. That is what is in front of you today. That is the full year impact at 17. And I believe the 15 was around eight, if I'm, I'm sorry, sorry. And I believe the 15 was around eight, if I'm, I'm sorry, sorry, not eight, 16, 16 million, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm getting.
So about 5 million or so?
Yes. It's about 6 million in total. So that, between the 15 that was originally presented and then the final version that is before you today is about $6 million.
Can it be, can it be adjusted at this point?
That's up for discussion. Right now, I'm listening to Commissioners. Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I, I support the study and the increase to $17 per hour. And what I don't want to get lost in this conversation is the fact that Cobb employees were, I don't know, Dr. Jackie, you can help me with, the length of time since the employees received a merit increase?
Thanks to the board, we did get a merit increase this past March.
Before.
But before then, it had been several years.
Several.
And they haven't just not been consecutive and consistent. Now, some may say, well, when the board augments some of the cost of healthcare, whatever, well, is that not a raise? It is not a cola. It is not like merit. So over the years, we have not been in a fiscal position to consecutively give 3% raises to our employees. And again, it is merit-based. It is not across the board.
Thank you. And thank you for making that distinction, because I think that the belief is that everyone across the county is going to receive a merit increase as well. But for reasons that I discussed in my earlier comments, I do support the $17 per hour. And a comment was made by Ms. Wilson earlier with respect to a living wage versus a minimum wage. And at $17 per hour is just $35,000 per year. And that number is tough to raise a family, but even as a single person, it is also tough. So we're talking a difference of maybe $4,000 per year, which would be extremely impactful, like you said, Dr. Jackie, and life-changing to some. It can be a question of someone having enough food to eat, or possibly being evicted, or leaving, or losing their home through foreclosure, as was discussed earlier today. So for that, I do support the study and the increase to $17 per hour.
Thank you, Commissioner Sheffield. Commissioner Richardson, you have another question?
Thank you. It was just to something Commissioner Burl had mentioned about the, sorry, about the compression, because it's kind of what I was asking about, was the feedback from staff with regards to the impact. And I understand that in consideration of that there had been a set aside in order to address some of the point issues that may have, may not have been completely uncovered as a part of the study?
We are addressing it. There is more compression probably that will be realized as it relates to grades more so than salaries. And we are going to be having those conversations with our, with our staff. We have gone from 100-plus grades to 28. What has happened is as people continue to come to the county, and we have been trying to address where they should be placed salary-wise, we've been raising grades, raising grades. And what we have found is we are just grade-heavy. So one of the things that the consultant said is, I don't know how you ended up with 130-something grades, so we need to reduce that. That will be, is being addressed, but more importantly than anything, and I hope our employees are listening to this, is your grade doesn't put food on your table. It is your salary. So we widen the ranges within those grades so that we could more effectively put people in those ranges based on time and tenure with the county. So I do want people to understand, when you go from 130-something grades to 27, you are going to have some compression in the grades. But what we try to do to augment that is to widen the ranges so that we could put people where they effectively belong within the ranges, to try to address those employees who have been here for a certain length of time. So from 1 to 5 years, 5 to 10, above 10, and then to also address some of those who have been here a little bit longer than 10 to 15 years. And I will say this again. A comp and class study is not ever designed to say we give everyone a raise. It is to look very closely at where you are today in the market, and what does it take if you were to try to advertise for that position and attract someone today? And I've been very honest with the workforce in saying, it is not a panacea. And some of you may not get anything, and what that means is you are already beyond the midpoint of the new recommended midpoint. And I will tell you that 98% of these employees who were included in this study are going to be far better off today, or tomorrow, or the next day than they are today. And it burdens me to have to listen to one, to someone say, they don't have the money to replace a refrigerator that is not working. They don't have the money to get new tires to come to work. They don't have the luxury of some of the things that we perhaps take for granted. But yet, they show up every single day to do the work of this county. I don't know how we can sleep at night and wonder how some of our employees who have been here this long, this loyal, deserve this, and we can question whether they deserve it. I don't know how you can do that. I don't.
As our County Manager over our employees, Dr. McMorris, I appreciate your comments. As a result of paying some people $17 an hour, according to MIT study on livable wage in Georgia, they're still going to be below the mark. A livable wage in Georgia is assessed to be $17.85. But that did not come into my consideration when I offered, originally, the $18. From last year, when we received feedback from staff and we learned about the issues in elections, that's when I learned we had employees, some of them making less than $10 an hour. And I was sick. So I knew this was something that we had to address, and I appreciate the County Manager being responsive with the class and pay and study and HR, because we had to expedite this. We did this in record time. But since I learned of some of our employees making less than $10 an hour, between that time and the consideration of the results of the class and pay study, I've seen, as everyone has seen, when you drive down the road and you see the billboards of companies hiring at 15, 16, 17, 18, and I'm talking fast food, restaurants, retailers, I began to question if 15 would be enough for us to attract and retain employees, because at this time, a lot of our departments were down about 30%, 40% of employees. But even before the pandemic, before learning of the $9 an hour, I recall continual discussions with DOT and Parks about their inability to retain staff at the lower wages that we had in our county. And guess what? The most calls we get are regarding right-of-way maintenance, the maintenance of our facilities. So the people that are on these front lines are the ones that will be the beneficiaries of the $17 an hour. I don't have the savviness to make this a political cry. This is about, thinking about those that I work with and that I see every day, and realizing that some of them were just scraping pennies together to provide what we want to deliver, which is the best service. In our county, our motto is expect the best, but we've never reconciled how you can expect the best and not pay for it. We've never reconciled that. And I can tell you, perhaps for our minimum wage, being above what the national average is, it may not be the best, but it'll be better. It might get to be comparable to the service levels that you expect, because this wage is directly correlated to how you get served. I've heard from managers, we're concerned about compression, but I've heard from managers also saying these new employees that we're bringing in, they're not at the same level as some of our other employees. So I can't, I don't know how to reconcile it. Do we give them wages that would make them want to provide quality service? Or do we just change the motto of our county? And I just, I didn't create this motto, but I certainly want to be a steward of it. And I think we have to have the tough conversations and make the tough decisions to be able to deliver on the things that we've promised. I find it very difficult to, Dr. McMorris, to hear how much conversation we're having about paying people $35,000 a year. I'm having a hard time with that. And then on the other hand, hearing how we shouldn't accept federal dollars to help people making $35,000 a year. Where is the help? Our frustration should be that there are people working full-time and yet are not earning enough to earn a living. As Chair, if you want to blame it on me, blame it on me. But I can't sit here in my heart of hearts and allow our men and women of this county that come in to serve with the same hearts that we have as elected officials who want to provide a public service, not to be paid for the value of service that not only our citizens expect, but that they want to give. So with that, I know I'm hearing a lot of laughter and chatter from the same people that we've provided respect to when they spoke. I am confidently in support of this wage. It's not the 18 that I had originally proffered. In fact, I asked staff, please consider 16, 17, 18. And I didn't make that out of thin air. This commission, we only had three people on the dais, possibly two, when we had the presentation of the class and pay study. That's where that came out of. It didn't come up out of thin air when I was standing on a stage. It came from a direct presentation. For those that are here in the audience, again, I'd ask that you not be rude, because we listened to you and we took into, into consideration the things that you shared. And this is what our, never mind, I'm not going to, let me just let that deflate. So with that, Commissioners, again, I'm pleased to present this motion. We have a motion and a second. We've had discussion, and I'll call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenda. Wasn't expecting that. With that, I'll move on to Agenda Item Number Seven.
So before I get to Agenda Item Number Seven, I would just like to thank each of you, each of the board members, the County Manager, the entire staff, the department heads, the budget team, everybody who was so incredibly involved in this budget since last September. I mean, it's crazy to think that we've been doing this for so long, and we are finally to this moment where we have a budget that is being presented in front of you. We've had multiple conversations, multiple meetings with each and every one of you. We've heard, had a public hearing on this, as well as I know each of you have received citizen input, citizen feedback. Our office has as well. So again, just thank you all for your hard work, your time, your dedication into getting to this point today. So with that, I do ask the Board of Commissioners to adopt the FY23 budget and authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So move to the presented.
Second.
I'll go to each Commissioner for discussion. Commissioner Gamble?
I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Commissioner Gamble. I've heard so much feedback and commentary up here, to the point where it's just too much. I need to just diffuse for a moment. We're going to take a five-minute break and come back. Thank you.
Where I got that impression from, I knew, I knew the millage had three, but for some reason I had the impression the budget had two hearings as well.
We just have one public hearing on the budget. We have the work session presentation prior to the public hearing, so that's when we fully present the budget to the, the board for the first time, then we advertise it in the paper, and then we have the public hearing following that advertisement, so the, the public has the ability to see the advertisement, comment, and then come to the public hearing prepared.
And I guess, this is kind of off, off-topic, but I can see where the public does get confused, because like for code amendments, comprehensive plan, you know, different studies we do, we usually do have two public hearings. So I can understand where there is confusion where the budget only has one.
Yeah.
Do you have a preference for us to have public comment prior to the budget, or for us to have the order that's been presented in the book?
Um, I would not mind having public comment, um, just as long as we follow the board rules that we're only going to have the first six at the beginning and the last six, as we usually do.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Richardson.
Yes, and I appreciate all the clarification that staff pulled together, um, and appreciate your consideration as well on this. Um, I would be open to having public comment occur prior to the budget. I, I presume that a lot of comments are about the budget that are present here today, so I am willing and able to do that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Burrell.
I agree, to put the first six prior to the budget, um, adoption, and i- in the past, when we only had to have one budget hearing, but we have three millage, a lot of times the speakers would come up and talk about both, and, and we kind of turned in the public hearing for the millage into both. So tonight, we just did the millage, so I think we should allow the first six that signed up to speak on the budget.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell.
Okay.
Commissioner Sheffield?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair, I am also open to hearing from, from the attendees tonight, and if I can also recommend, and I don't know if this would be the appropriate place to, um, to talk about this, but if we would add another, uh, budget hearing in the evening, because it looks like they're-
In the future?
Yeah, in the future.
Okay.
Not tonight, in the future.
Okay.
So that way, there are at least two, one during the day and one in the evening.
Okay, thank you.
We can make that amendment for next year, that would be fine.
Thank you.
Happy to do it.
Appreciate it. For our county clerk, um, do I need to, um, have a motion for us to change the order of the agenda, or is it okay, just with the consensus? Okay, thank you. With that, let's move to public comment, Bill, if you can, let us know how many speakers we have.
Sir Chairwoman, as the board provides the podium for public comments, appropriate to review the related meeting rules, and, uh, first one is please state your name, and if you're speaking on behalf of an organization, all comments should be addressed through the chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the board. The comments should not be impertinent, derogatory, offensive, or slanderous, to that end, the board encourages, regardless of the topic, for the audience to be respectful and courteous to all of the speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to be both listened to and to be heard by treating each other with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the board or the administration of Cobb County government. And remind everyone, there is a timer on the podium for your five minutes. With that, the first public speaker is John McLean.
My name is John McLean, speaking on behalf of myself. Thank you for rearranging your schedule on your agenda. I assumed that I would get a chance to talk about the budget before you voted on it. I guess that was incorrect. Anyway, thank you for doing, making that accommodation. At every commission meeting, the board members decide on critical issues that determine the future of our county and the future circumstances of our own lives. I cannot recall one of more significance than this one tonight. Up for consideration is the proposed budget of 1.4 billion, billion, a huge increase over the current year. It's an extreme overreach, in my opinion, of power. It is incredible, incredible to me to hear that the chair heard the same grumblings as I did at town hall meetings, but came away from those meetings with the impression that citizens wanted more of what she was offering. That's not my take. There was an overwhelming lack of support for this increase, and just to make it clear, I oppose it strongly. At those town hall meetings, we also heard department heads lay out reasoning why they needed more staff. We were led to believe, or I was led to believe, that the reason for hiring 148 new employees was because they needed to replace those employees that had left their jobs for various reasons. That's not the case. Staff is down by 40% on average. That's a bad thing, and it needs to be addressed. But the 148 new hires being requested are permanent positions and intended, and are not intended to replace any of the 40% vacancies. So something doesn't make sense in my mind. If 40% of your current staff are vacant, why is the county requesting 148 new positions? How do you even know how many positions you need if you don't have a complete staff? How do you know that? And, and by the way, when was the last time the Cobb County laid off an employee? Yes, the commission furloughed some employees several years ago, but they were never laid off. You see, the problem here is, when you add 148 new staff positions, they'll be here forever. Our bud, your budget's going to keep going up, you're going to keep adding staff, you need to figure out a way to cut back. You've been able to get by with 40% less staff this year, replace those people, and then think about whether you need 148 new people. Adding new employee positions is irresponsible, and it's not sustainable. I don't have any issues with offering fair salaries to people, as long as people perform their duties. But commission, the commission is going to offer, uh, that would fill vacant positions at, at a, at a minimum of $17 an hour. What are you going to do to the employees that have been here for a few years, that are currently making $10 or $12 an hour? Are you going to give them $17 an hour? I think you answered that, but my question is, are they going to work harder? I don't know. But there should be an expectation with the salary increase. That's my opinion. Anyway, um, you've already voted on that, but here's, here's the point that I want to make. So fuel prices are as high as, as I can recall in recent history. Food and drugs and other, other essential items are going up dramatically. Overall inflation is skyrocketing, yet you decide on a tax increase through your valo, valuation and millage, millage rates. Thankfully, I have been blessed and I'm fortunate enough that in my life, I've saved enough money to hopefully weather through the storm. But what about those who are not as fortunate as me? Some can't even afford to put a gallon of gas in their tank, and you're going to hit them with a tax increase to boot. At a time when no one can afford it, you increase our taxes at employees when you're not sure whether you need them or not, and demand that your budget be increased dramatically. A lot of us are, are cutting back, trying to figure out a ways to cut back, but you are spending full speed ahead. I repeat that, spending full speed ahead. I respectfully ask-
Mr. McLean, your, your time is up.
Okay, thank you. I respectfully ask you-
Mr., uh, next speaker is Leroy Emkin.
We're not doing that. Man, Jesus.
Leroy Emkin, Cobb County. It is particularly unfortunate for those of us living in-
Sarah, please state your name for the record.
I did, Leroy Emkin, Cobb County.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Start the time now.
Thank you.
It is particularly unfortunate for those of us living in Cobb County that at least one member of our Cobb County Board of Commissioners is intent on forcing the World Economic Forum, Great Recents, Green New Deal, and all of, uh, all, and all of those living and working in Cobb County. The commissioner appears to believe that the Green New Deal is in the best interest of Cobb County. It is not in the best interest, and we must not and will not permit that to happen. As one example of this, why this is not in our best interest, consider the following with respect to windmill sources of power. Right now, the average wind farm contains about 150 turbines. Each wind turbine needs 80 gallons of oil as a lubricant, lubricant, which is P A O synthetic, which is a P A O in synthetic oil, i.e. a polyalphaolefin lubricant, which is dependent on, dependent on crude oil and natural gas to produce. For 150 turbines for a typical wind farm, 12,000 gallons of P A O synthetic oil lubricant are required, and all of that oil needs to be replaced approximately once a year. It is estimated that a little over 3,800 turbines will be needed to power a city the size of New York. That's 304,000 gallons of refined oil per year for just one city. That's 25-plus wind farms, each using 150 turbines for that city. To find the grand total of yearly oil consumption from so-called clean energy, you have to calculate the oil consumption for every city across the nation, large and small. Where does that oil going to come from? Since January 2021? Not before 2021. It comes from our enemies in the Mideast, not to mention the fact that the large equipment needed to build these wind farms runs on petroleum, as well as the equipment required for installation, service, maintenance, and eventual removal, and just exactly how eco-friendly is wind energy anyway. Each turbine requires a footprint of 1.5 acres, so a wind farm of 150 turbines needs 225 acres of land. To power a city the size of New York, you'd need 57,000 acres of land, and who knows the astronomical amount of land you would need to power the entire U.S., all of which would have to be clear-cut land because trees create a barrier and turbulence that interferes with the 20 mile-per-hour sustained wind velocity necessary for the turbine to work properly. Keep in mind that not all states are, are suitable for such sustained winds. Now what about disposal issues? Currently, the lifespan of a modern top-quality, hi- highly efficient wind turbine is 20 years. After that, what happens to those gigantic fiber composite blades? They cannot be economically reused, refurbished, reduced, uh, repurposed or recycled. Rather, they are disposed of in special landfills. Unfortunately, we are already running out of these special landfill spaces for the used blades that have already exceeded their, their useful life, lifetime. These blades are anywhere from 120 to 200 feet long, and there are three blades per turbine, and that's with only 3% to 7% of the nation currently being supplied with intermittent, intermittent, i.e. unreliable wind energy. Just imagine, if we had the other 93% of the nation on the wind grid, 20 years from now, you, you'd have all those unusable blades with no place to put them, then 20 years after that, and 20 years after that, and so on. Is this green energy? No. Another issue is that sadly, according to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, between 140,000 and 500,000 birds die in the United States alone after colliding with wind turbine blades each year, many of which are endangered hawks, falcons, owls, geese, ducks, and eagles. Another problem with windmills is that the generator and switching equipment operated high power and voltage are packed together in the turbine cover housing due to limited space, so there's a danger of arcs and electrical fire. This is prevented by putting all the electrical equipment in a pressure vessel filled with sulfur hexafluoride, S F 6, a synthetic gas that has dielectric properties which suppress arcs and fires. However, windmills leak this gas, something around a pound each year. S F 6 has an atmospheric lifetime of 3,000 years and is 23,000 times more effective as a greenhouse gas than carbon. This is another way of, this is another item that falls under the category of gee whiz, I guess we didn't think this through. Are you listening, AOC? Are you listening, Board of Commissioners? This is not good for Cobb County, nor the state, nor the country. I'm going to make another presentation of, like this, about solar panels-
Thank you.
Mr. Emkin, I'm sorry, your time's up.
Sir, your time has run, please. Thank you. Please honor this.
Uh, Daryl Bryce? Next speaker's, the next speaker is Debbie Fisher.
Good evening, Debbie Fisher, East Cobb. I originally was going to speak during public comment about an email exchange between myself, Mr. Volkman, eventually Mr. Cavett, and I will go ahead and briefly, I won't read the entire email thread as I was going to, but I do want to read you one thing, just to remind everyone here. It's called our First Amendment. Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or of the right of people peacefully to assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances. With that, I'm going to cut to the chase. Mr. Cavett chimed in on a couple of, um, questions I had, um, between the school board digest and ours. Here was his email. "Bill, I'm unsure how to respond to this, as it's unclear if she simply doesn't comprehend the difference between the school district and the county government, or just doesn't like the answer. Regardless, I would remind you that our board-approved communication policy says inquiries of this nature outside the scope of regular constituent services should be directed to my office. I've seen how busy your office is, and it's unreasonable to have you to continually respond to these kind of inquiries slash debates. Besides, it's our job. I would of course defer to the constituents, District Commissioner. However, in the meantime, I would ask you to forward all similar inquiries to our response email." And then he gave the email. "I will work with I S to set up a similar address for non-media inquiries and pass it along when it's active. My answer is, Mr. Cavett, your insult and comments are completely unacceptable. I am certain that you are aware that I understand tax digest and governmental structure. Based on your past experience, when I channel, challenged Chairman Boyce's tax increase, in which you were required to change his last town hall presentation, to refute my facts versus your propaganda, your, I have a name, and it is not she. I hear from this board chair over and over again, from our county attorney over and over again, how we're all to be respectful. That should go for staff, too. You may address me as Ms. Fisher or Debbie, as you should any other taxpaying citizen. Many women would consider that comment of she as misogynistic, but I'll leave that there. I would like a copy of this new policy that requires constituents, which apparently is constituent services. I'd like a copy of that policy because I don't believe it exists." And with that, I'm going to address a couple of comments made on the Diaz, um, that are basically trying to refute the fire fund objection that I have. I do not object to the fire department getting the money they require. They got a 20% increase just in the digest alone. They were given the .13 mills, which is basically the equivalent this year of only 5.7 million dollars. They were not underfunded. I sent all of you a tally sheet from 1994 through 2023 on the increases they have seen in revenue year over year over year, even when their millage rates were cut. And with that, I will address the county attorney's comment that no decision from the Attorney General's office was necessary because the Attorney General does have, not have any power. Mr. Rawling, you may recall in July of 2018, a response was requested-
I'm sorry, Ms. Fisher. I'm sorry, Ms. Fisher. Excuse me, Ms., I'm, please direct your comments to me, you can state it, but it's-
I'm sorry, Chairman. A response was requested and given from the Attorney General's office to address a legal controversy over excess SLOs funds, as it pertained to this very person who opposed the 1.7 millage increase that Mr. Boyce was trying to give. So again, I request that you do your diligence and ask for an opinion of the Attorney General.
Thank you.
William Parker?
Thank you, William Parker, resident of East Cobb, as I mentioned earlier, for the last 40 years about. I really intended to talk about this, but I had an opportunity to do so earlier. Those people are, are very upset. I, I appreciate the job that commissioners are doing, Madam Chairwoman. I think you do an outstanding job, uh, given the constraints and everything else that you have. I don't understand, and I didn't read the budget, so I really can't comment expertly on that, but I don't know if Cobb is trying to set up a wind farm or not, but the earth is on fire, and, uh, we need to do something. I don't have an idea. As someone talked about the First Amendment, yeah, we absolutely have freedom of speech. It's absolute right, given to all of us by the Constitution of the United States, but we do not have freedom to choose the consequences of our free speech. Say anything you want, but there are consequences. Just be aware of that. There are also consequences to not having a county budget that's appropriate, because there are consequences to not having employees who are adequately paid. People will not work for free. That's over, okay? We got rid of that concept almost 200 years ago, and we need to remember that it's gone. People don't want to work for nothing, people work for money, and the only reason that they do work is to get money. Nobody can live adequately in the United States of America, and I don't care where it is, adequately, I'm saying, operative word there, on $35,000 a year. It does not work in this society, not in Cobb County, not in any other county, not in any borough or anything else in the United States. It is simply not happening. I recently had an opportunity to visit Boston, where my son lives with his family. I was there for 10 days, which was probably about eight days too long, but, but the matter of fact is, you know, they, they have completely revamped the south side of Boston. You know, they have a seaport area, they've spent billions and billions of dollars revamping it, they have pocket parks everywhere, it's a very walkable city, uh, which we say we want, that kind of an atmosphere, but nobody wants to pay for it. And it's just as I said before, you, nothing from nothing equals nothing. You got to pay for stuff. I was affiliated with an organization here a long time ago, and I remember every day the manager used to talk, or at least every week anyway, not every day, it felt like every day, about, "We have to cut expenses. We have," that's all I ever heard from him, "we have to cut expenses." So finally, one day I told him, I said, "Okay, I have a solution for you." He said, "What's that?" I said, "Shut the cotton picking place down. Just close the doors, fire everybody, sell off all the furniture, stop paying rent, do everything, and you, and the expenses are gone." "Well, we can't do that." "So what, you're going to have expenses if you're going to operate." That particular company is out of business, because they, all they focused on was cutting expenses. Folks, it costs money to live. There is such a thing as inflation, and yeah, I understand that some people are hurting. I feel sorry for them, but I can't help out everybody. Try to help one or two every now and then, and I do the best I can. One of my purposes in life is to make sure that every person that I encounter, on a personal or professional basis, is left better for the experience. If I can do that, now I feel like I've achieved something. If I can't do that, I haven't achieved anything. Like I said, I appreciate the work that you folk are doing, but you really have to understand that it costs money to operate a county, and everybody wants smaller government. Well, you can get small, just like that guy was telling me about a few minutes ago. We can get smaller, shut the thing down, put out your own fires, okay? Arrest your own speeders, protect your own children when somebody comes into school to try to kill them all with an AK-47 or whatever it is they come in with, AR-15, I guess, I'm not really a gun nut, so I don't really understand those things. Do it yourself. If you're not willing to do it yourself, pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sally Grubbs?
Ms. Rosman. Hello, Chairwoman, Commissioners, Christine Rosman, Marietta, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself, and there were some really, really, really good comments tonight, and I'm a little frustrated because I come here twice a month, I get here usually anywhere from an hour to two hours early, and there are a lot of us that would come. Monica used to come, Delancey used to come with her friends, would all be hanging out, waiting for you all guys to come, and then we'd have a makeshift list of who was going to speak first, and then we actually exercised the diversity, equity, and inclusion. We actually all got along great. It wasn't like, oh, you can't go first or whatever, you know, I think it happened one time. Actually, tonight was the second time, because I did the little makeshift list, and that just got hijacked, and, you know, the thing is, is that I don't expect any special treatment. I do know that I am conservative, I have conservative thoughts. I know there are other people on the board that have conservative thoughts, and sometimes the marginalizing is really annoying, you know? It's just annoying, and it's not respectful. So when I first heard about the diversity, equity, inclusion, I thought, what's that about? Like, why would we need that? And now I see, because I see that it would probably be very helpful for maybe Cobb County, the county, not us that live here, but maybe the employees, so that we can all treat one another respectfully. Because I've seen some things that are cringe-worthy when people don't agree with other people. I'd also like to talk about the budget, because, guess it's too late to do that, because, uh, yeah, really, a billion-dollar budget, and we have like, one chance to speak out on it, and then we, and then thank you for accommodating tonight, but I got to say that it's very frustrating, as being a Cobb County resident, of looking at what is happening to this county. And I'm going to go back to that diversity, equity, inclusion, because there was another situation that happened. I went to the Board of Elections. That woman, Jennifer Mother Mossmo, Mossbacher, um, that was despicable, how she grilled and was so disrespectful to citizens. Concerned citizens came up and said, hey, you know, like, you know, wanted to look at the voter rolls and, and found, you know, 40 here or 30 here that were in different states, that were still on the voter rolls. I, I was stunned, and I know a lot of people sent out emails to the chair, the Board of Elections chair, but, and I think you appointed her, Chairman Cupid, Chairwoman Cupid, and, um, I don't know, it, it was, um, eh, we love our county. I don't know if we really love what's happening to our county, and it's not our fellow Cobb County persons, but when we feel like we're getting a little hijacked, um, not being, things not being honest, not following Georgia code, Georgia laws, and just being flip about them, about SLOst, oh, we're going to go, oh, there's, it's open-ended, it goes on forever. No, it really doesn't. So, eh, who holds you all accountable? I mean, it's us, but we don't seem to have any impact. We, there's, there's others that have, there's an agenda that's going on that does not concern us, and it's kind of impenetrable. So, and I'll tell you what, as things get more expensive, and you have elderly people on a fixed income, and single parents on a fixed income- on a fixed income and single parents on a fixed income, all this tax crap is going to bite you in the rear end. Thank you.
James Coleman.
Excuse me, Bill. Are we gonna go through all of public comments?
We had two that were not here, so I was gonna step down and grab the next two off of the second section, and this will be the last one.
Okay, thank you.
James Coleman, I'm with the Cobb County Library Board of Trustees. Chairwoman Cupid, Commissioners, Madam City Manager, thank you for the opportunity to speak for a few moments today, and also for the work that you do on behalf of our community every day. Judging by some of the conversation today, I know that you have a very difficult job, and so I thank you for doing it. I came here originally today to speak in favor of the fiscal year '23 line item, budget line items related to our, our public libraries, particularly those pieces of it related to compensation for our librarians, and so this comment has become a thank you for the vote that you just conducted. As I said, I'm a member of the Board of Trustees, and so in that capacity, I get a chance to sort of go and visit some of these facilities, and I'm humble enough to know that I'm standing in front of a group of extremely knowledgeable people, and there's not much that I can say that you don't already know, but I did wanna share a story, and so in that, I just had a chance to go and sit at my, my local library, Louis A. Ray, with some of the librarians and watch the work that they do. And it's incredible. It's absolutely astonishing, the level and breadth of the service that they are providing to the citizens of Cobb County. The weekly sort of storytime has become so popular at this library that it has overwhelmed the little footprint that that building has, if you know it, and they take it across the street to the library in the park. They've partnered with our police and fire to bring trucks out there on occasion to increase the energy and enthusiasm, really sort of in building in our young people an excitement for reading that is powerful. At the same time, these same librarians are sitting with the people who are unhomed in our community and connecting them with resources that might help them to get to a better place in their life. So these folks are truly doing God's work, you know, and they deserve the compensation that you just approved for them. So that's all I have. Thank you for, for that vote and for the work that you do, and I, I pray that you have discernment as you make all the tough decisions that you have to make in your most difficult jobs. Thank you.
Chairwoman, that's the first portion of our public comment. As I recall, the board, we started looking at budget item number seven regarding the budget, and there was a motion, and there was a second that's pending before the board on that item, so.
Thank you. All right. So with that, I will go to each Commissioner and ask them to provide any comments or questions with respect to the budget prior to me calling the question. Commissioner Gamble, I'll start with you.
Thank you, and I will say we have a philosophical difference in budgeting on this board, and I do not support the budget as it is proposed. I do not support the DEI Director, even though that I know was included in last year's budget, but more so, I don't support the contingency funding that we continue to put forth at, what is it, $52 million, I think, this year? Because as I said, our fund balance has been growing incrementally from 2018 to this year. It's now double the amount, which means we're collecting more money than we should be. I also, a couple of our public speakers were correct, you know, we keep hearing that we're down 40% in staffing, but we are asking for new staffing, and I know a lot of requests that we've had are increasing services in areas that we are currently already servicing. So to me, we are expanding government in this budget, and I cannot support that at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson.
Certainly, in previous hearing, all of my questions were addressed.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burrow.
Thank you. As I stated in the work session when this was presented, there are several good things in this budget that I do support, such as the stepping grade for public safety, the pay-in class for non-sworn, the reduction in the water transfer, which I've been working on for ten years now, and other critical positions that we prioritize. I really feel that the focus should be on implementing the stepping grade and filling the vacancies for 40% in most of the departments that we're down, and see where we are once that is done, but I can't, I can't see bringing on 147 or 148 brand-new positions until our vacancies are filled and, and the pay-in class is implemented, which hopefully will cover retention and recruiting. So, and I'm very concerned that this budget at 1.4 million, someone said billion, I think, before, but over a million is sustainable for year after year, and I don't wanna get into another shortfall like we have in the past in 2011 and 2017. So I, I know that the budget a few years ago was put with the millage. I know we have to pass the millage, which we've done, to submit to the state by the end of the year. The budget could, could be reconsidered and maybe look at some of the other issues, other line items that we maybe could look at if that's plausible by the board, and, and pass a revised budget in September.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sheffield.
Bill, I just need for you to just provide a little clarification on the positions. So there are 148 positions that we're looking to fill, and there are concerns that there are vacant, there are currently some vacant positions, but just for clarification, can you just walk us through or describe that the 148 that we're looking to fill are different positions from those that are currently vacant?
So, so Commissioner, I wanna try to answer that in two parts. So there's gonna be a focus on filling vacancies first. So the emphasis of this budget was the class and pay study to address the vacancies as well as to recruit new staff. So that was one of the major focuses and priorities of this budget. So I think during one of the work sessions, the county manager indicated also that there's gonna be an emphasis from, from the county staff perspective, that that is the priority one. There are some positions that are unique, so those are not related to vacancies. So there are those that are specific. So, for example, in, in our office, we have a Grants Division Manager. We don't have a Grants Division Manager, and we don't have any vacancies. So that's, there's some uniqueness there. But there was also areas to address enhanced service. So we are looking at service areas, like in DOT, one of the hot topics is always roadway maintenance. We're adding additional crews. We're adding 10 new staff members for road, roadway maintenance, and then the capital equipment associated with those. So again, that is to provide an enhanced service where we're struggling, but again, the focus will be first on filling vacancies before we go into the new positions. So we are taking kind of a two-step approach when we're, when we're addressing that. Again, vacancies first, new positions. If you have vacancies in that same type of position, we're gonna ask you to do vacancies first and then go new, but there are some unique positions that are being proposed in this budget that we currently do not have vacancies in.
Thank you. My other questions have been addressed throughout the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I wanna thank you, Bill, and our county manager, all of our agency heads, our constitutional officers, for the several months that we have been working together to get to where we are today. As was shared with the millage rate and was reiterated time and time again, what we're doing here tonight is not necessarily a panacea to address all of the issues, concerns, interests of our citizens and of our staff, but it does help us to move significantly further ahead in improving our service levels to our citizens, and that does fall significantly on improving our staffing levels. I know you just answered Commissioner Sheffield's question with respect to vacancies versus staffing. I didn't know, Dr. McMorris, if you wanted to add anything else to that.
Thank you, Chairwoman. No, we've had very robust discussions with our department heads and shared that the goal is to fill your vacancies first, and then new positions have to come through my office before they are approved to be filled.
Thank you for addressing that. With that, Commissioners, we have a motion, a second, and discussion. I'll call the question. The motion carries three, two. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Our last matter in this portion of our meeting is to authorize the implementation of our class and compensation structure between July of 2022 and September 4th, and I'll turn things over to you, Glenda.
Yep, I'm back to push my luck, so.
You got the green on, so let's go.
So, Madam Chair, as you just said, you know, this item is asking that the board authorize the implementation of the previously approved classification and compensation structure recommendations effective September 4th, 2022. That means the increases would appear on the September 23rd, 2022 paycheck, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. So moved as presented?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Yes, Commissioner Burrow.
Thank you, Glenda. So by implementing it a month early, that will come out of the current budget?
Yes, at 2022. We have savings for that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
And is there any additional discussion or questions? Call a question. The motion carries five, zero. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Before we move to our consent agenda, I need to call a brief recess. Thank you. Thank you. Twenty-sixth Board of Commissioners meeting. We are now at our consent agenda. Prior to the meeting, the matters of the consent agenda were scrolling on the screen, and they will do so once this meeting concludes. Commissioners, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as revised and authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five, zero. Thank you, Commissioners. We are now moving on to the Sheriff's tab.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, County Manager. Sheriff's Department has two items tonight. The first one is to authorize the purchase of replacement vehicles for the Cobb County Sheriff's Office as part of the 2016 SPOS. Sheriff's Department still struggles to find vehicles to replace the fleet, the vehicles with excessive mileage and aged fleet, and we found ten with a Brandon Motor Company, which is a sole source, and we're asking or recommending that the Board of Commissioners authorize the purchase of vehicles from a sole source vendor, Brandon Motor Company, in the amount not to exceed $382,500 and authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Purchasing Director to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioners, please note that this agenda item was revised to reflect the comments of yesterday's agenda session. With that, Commissioners, I move that we approve this agenda item as revised.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Commissioner Gamble?
And Chief Register, this is not directed at you, but I just find it very interesting that since January 1st of 2021, the Sheriff and I have replaced 135 vehicles before this ten. So my question is, is how are you budgeting, if you've purchased 135 vehicles over the past two years, how are you budgeting that to be replaced? Because that's a lot of vehicles to be replaced at one time.
Yes, ma'am. I understand. The, all the vehicles, and I think that we got information from Fleet that will verify that they have been replacement vehicles. When the Sheriff came into office, we found a fleet that was very aged that had not been, there had not been a replacement strategy, it appeared. And so I think what the Sheriff has attempted to do with different funding, especially using the 2016 SPOS funding, is to address our aging fleet when we can, as we can, and as the budget allows. I think the last time we were here, you and I had a discussion, and I still think we have somewhere around forty-seven to fifty vehicles that were still in excessive mileage. At that time, you approved thirty. This is an additional ten. Now specifically, any other budgetary questions that you have? I don't know if I have the information or the knowledge to answer that at this time. And I don't really know if I even answered your question. I tried to in a roundabout way.
Well, and I know this is being used with SPOS funds from 2016, so again, it wa, there wasn't SPOS funds in the 2022 SPOS specifically for vehicle replacement for the Sheriff's Office, or if it was, I know it's not to the amount that you've expended here.
I think that this is one of the authorized capital replacement, and I don't know if...
So Commissioner, as part of the twenty-three budget that we just proposed, you saw a step-up increase in vehicle replacement from five to six million dollars. That's to account for the additional need for county vehicles count, or vehicles county-wide, but specifically, a good chunk of that was related to the SO's office to, to get them on a replacement schedule. So I know the SO has been working very closely with Fleet to get on a schedule, because as, as Mike stated, that, that hadn't necessarily happened. It was based on available capital funds within their budget, and we have transitioned that out of the Sheriff's budget directly into Fleet to be on that schedule going forward. So that way, we're not looking at large tranches of vehicles at once, and we can be on a very smooth replacement schedule. That way, also, we have a capital replacement that is not fluctuating dramatically year to year. So like, one year, if we're trying to replace 200 vehicles at once, that's going to be a huge increase. So if we can spread it out and do it smoothly, it keeps our budgets a little bit more stable.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. Are there any more questions or comments? Call the question. The motion carries five, zero. Thank you. Understand you have another agenda item?
Yes, ma'am. The, the next is to purchase replacement industrial kitchen equipment for the Cobb County Adult Detention Center, the kitchen area. The kitchen equipment has reached its end of life, and of course, is, when you look at the amount of meals, it's about 6,000 per day that we have to prepare for our personnel and for detainees, about 2,000, three times a day. And we're asking to replace, out of the 2016 SPOS, about $350,000 in kitchen equipment. And so we're recommending that the Board of Commissioners authorize the purchase of industrial kitchen, kitchen equipment in the amount not to exceed $350,000 from Kattam Restaurant Supply Incorporated under GSA Contract GS-07F-0342V and authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Cobb County Purchasing Director to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Motion to approve as it has been revised?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five, zero. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank, thank you. And Commissioner Gamble, I'll try to follow up with you on some of the questions that you have on vehicles later. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now at our Department of Transportation tab.
Good evening. DOT has ten items for your consideration tonight. Our first item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Accelerator Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $1,420,000 for Ostel Road Sidewalk, project number X-2765, authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you, Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five, zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a construction agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for South Barrett Reliever Phase Three, Cobb County Project X-2407, authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve.
Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five, zero.
Thank you. Our next item related to the same project is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with C.W. Matthews Contracting Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $37,942,300 for South Barrett Reliever Phase Three, authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve.
Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five, zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement number one to project number X-2314, task order number one to the 2020 Master Task Order Contract with Wood Environmental and Infrastructure Solutions Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $174,980 for preliminary engineering design of intersection improvements on Shiloh Road at Royal Drive, Apartment Drive. Approve a task order time extension through August 29th, 2025, authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five, zero.
Thank you. Our, our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners ratify previous action by the County Manager authorizing emergency drainage repairs on Norton Place in response to multiple sinkholes and avoid. Approve project number B-2240 to the 2021 Countywide Unit Price Contract with Chatfield Contracting Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $371,659 for said repairs. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the project number D-2835 to the 2021 Countywide Unit Price Contract with Advanced Sports Construction LLC, savings to the project in the amount of $30,563 for emergency drainage repairs on Bedell Court. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved. Second.
Call, excuse me, is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five, zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Chatfield Contracting Incorporated in a savings to the project in the amount of $11,740.85 for drainage system repairs on Starcrest Lane, project number X-22110, authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve.
Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five, zero.
Thank you. Our next item is similar to a, a previously approved program for general county employees, but is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a fifth amendment to the Transit System Award Agreement with First Transit Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $330,000 for the provision of a frontline retention incentive program for retaining frontline field staff supporting the delivery of CobbLink transit services. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved as presented?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five, zero.
Thank you. Then our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by declaration of taking under OCGA Section 32-3-4, authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings on one parcel on Callaway Road Sidewalks, project number X-2778. Adopt a resolution and order informed substantially similar to the attachment as approved by the County Attorney's Office and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
I just have a question for Drew. Based on our discussion yesterday at work session and our follow-up email with the east side of Callaway Road, I believe, if we move forward with this project, what about the funding for the east side of the project, of Callaway Road?
Uh, the...
The email that you sent yesterday?
Of course. So the project is, is currently designed on the west side to, to be able to provide for access to the, the numerous subdivisions on that side of the road. We did, we had looked at in the past, funding it on the, the east side. That would come at a significantly increased cost, particularly for the section between the creek and Ostel Road, so the southern section. Because of the grades through that area, there's some significant retaining walls through that. So what, what we recommend moving forward is to proceed with sidewalk on the west side, it will provide a continuous section, connection between Al Bishop and Jamar Miller and Ostel Road. But we would, and I have tasked Traffic Operations to look at the pedestrian crossing.
Okay.
There at the park, as well as some potential sidewalk on the east side of the road to make sure that there is connectivity between the various facilities at Jamar Miller.
Okay. I'm sorry, was I supposed to hold that for discussion?
No, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
Just to clarify the facility, there's a gravel parking lot on the east side and just, there could be a short sidewalk to the building.
Mm-hmm.
If that makes sense. Not, instead of it going all the way on the east side.
Okay.
Thank you, Drew. Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate your follow-up.
Mm-hmm. So moved. Second.
Is there any additional discussion? That's okay. I'll call the question. We're, we're fine. All right. Motion carries five, zero.
Thank you. And our final item tonight is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a revised budget and current schedule for the 2005 Transportation Improvements Program funded primarily by the 2005 Special Purpose Local Options Sales Tax and authorize the corresponding budget transactions for the 2005 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program budget and schedule attached.
So moved as presented?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five, zero. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I missed that. The motion carries four, one, with Commissioner Gamble in opposition. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now moving on to our Support Services tab.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners and County Manager. For our first item this evening, we request the Board of Commissioners to authorize the Purchasing Director to purchase hardware, software and implementation services from Flagship Solutions LLC in an amount not to exceed $180,322 for IBM Power Nine Equipment 2016 SPOS Project X-0020 and authorize the corresponding budget transactions.
So moved as presented?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five, zero.
Thank you. Our second item this evening is a joint item with Communications to request the Board of Commissioners approve addendum and supplemental terms and conditions one for Sprout Social Implementation with SHI International Corporation under provisions of Georgia Department of Administrative Services Contract 99999 SPD 5201908140001 in an amount not to exceed $171,440 2016 SPOS Project X-0020, authorize the corresponding budget transactions and authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents as approved by the County Attorney's Office.
So moved as presented?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five, zero. Thank you.
Thank you. For our final item this evening, we request the Board of Commissioners approve addendum one and supplemental terms and conditions for Statement of Work One for Achieve It Plan Management Implementation with Karasov Technology Corporation under provisions of the NCPA Contract 0186 in an amount not to exceed $189,000 2016 SPOS Project X-0020, authorize the corresponding budget transactions and authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents as approved by the County Attorney's Office.
So moved as presented?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five, zero.
Thank you.
We are now moving on to our Community Development tab.
Good evening, everyone. Jessica Glenn, Cobb County Community Development. This evening, I have one item for consideration. The Board of Commissioners approve an agreement with Clarion Associates in an amount not to exceed $499,763 for consulting services to prepare Unified Development Code, authorize corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved as presented?
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Gamble?
Jessica, I appreciate the long conversation we had today on this, and I support what you and staff are looking to do in this. My concern goes back, and this was seen on the Evergreen Study, is where one member of this board changed the direction of a consultant's work. My concern is that could potentially happen here. Therefore, while I support the work that staff is going to do on this, I do not support this agenda item because of the concern that it's not really a board vote that's going to come through here and potentially one individual will direct the direction of this study.
Okay. I think that should be addressed. I'm not aware of, I don't know if any of the board is aware.
Sure, I'll address it. It goes back to the Evergreen Study, where again, I was informed that the consultants had recommended $15 an hour. Our staff had done the work for $15 an hour, and a member of this board arbitrarily changed it to 17 and changed the whole direction of what the consultants had come up with. That is, the whole fear that was coming up in the cityhood movement was that one individual could change the direction of the future land use plan, the community, you know, the UDC. And while I understand what Jessica and her team are trying to achieve through this UDC, if, if one individual can influence the outcome of another consultant's study and change the direction that that consultant, which we paid over $500,000 to, to do that study, and one individual changed that direction, how do I know that that's not going to happen here? Therefore, while I support what Jessica's team is trying to achieve through this, I lack the trust that her team is going to be able to work with the consultant to get the result that the people have been promised, and that direction is not changed by one individual on this board.
Perhaps what I think I'm hearing is that there's not a willingness to approve this out of the risk that one commissioner could impact the direction of this study. I try to be a forward-looking person, and so I will share this. Any one of us has the ability to impact the direction of anything that we do, but it always takes three out of five of us to make policy. Always.
Always. And again, I'm, you know, I've shared this during a work session, so I don't know why we continue to beat a dead horse, is that there was conversation about the change for the class and pay. I don't think you stayed for the whole work session, but it also was shared with staff that also went and talked to each commissioner. But I can share with this here, as the same for the class and pay study, any matter that a commissioner has the ability to influence always comes back before the whole board. Just today, Commissioner, you've influenced the outcome of an agenda item. The sheriff had two matters which were before us, agenda items twenty-four and twenty-five, of which the language was revised because of your concern about consistency. That concern was not shared by anyone else, or at least initiated by anyone else. You did that. But the whole board had to vote on it. I would like to think as being one of the top five decision makers of this county, that anyone up here has that same amount of influence. But that influence isn't just for commissioners. Citizens have that influence. I've been here many times and have seen people stand up where our director is standing right now and address a concern as one person. But I've seen that person be so influential at what they did that it changed policy. It helped to influence the change of policy, excuse me, but it still took a majority of the board to do it. So whether or not those conversations start outside of the public eye, they will always have to come before the public through this board to vote on that matter. And that's the confidence I think that we can have as a board and that the public should have, that anyone, any one of us can influence the outcome of the work that we do. But it always takes a majority to pass it.
Yes, Commissioner Burl. And Commissioner Burl had something, excuse me, she's reminding me before I go to you, Commissioner Richardson. She wanted to speak. That's what they tell me, that I look this side, so.
Me and Monica are over here. I mean, I'm sorry.
Yes, Commissioner.
My, my concern no longer has been spending five hundred thousand dollars on an outside consultant that doesn't know Cobb County. We do code amendments twice a year or more sometimes in the past, and our staff knows the code and what needs changing and what needs deleting or adding. So I have a problem spending money on an outside consultant when, I know y'all say staff doesn't have time to do it, but our staff does and knows it.
So I don't support. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you. So just two comments, one to reference, you know, this request is coming from staff, that they're telling us that they need the additional capacity. So we are trying to be responsive to that request as well. So I do understand that and we have had internal conversations with members of staff as well about where there were opportunities. But what has certainly been, this board has been made assured of, is that it's steered by staff, that it's conducted through robust public outreach, and that's something that we should be held accountable for, is that that's, that that's executed. But to the other concern about the potential risk involved, I would like to think that the process for this will be, while there are similarities, there are certainly differences with the budget itself, since the budget is fully looking at one thing that we all have to come to agreement on, whereas in this case, we are representing more of a district future land use, how we're positioning that, how we're maintaining consistency, how we're reconciling issues, but how we're making sure that we're consolidating all of the sources of information. So I think that there will be a lot more opportunity to influence to an even greater degree what that looks like in the final form. But I'm, and like I said earlier, to make sure that we're following through on that original commitment to the community and to staff. And perhaps, I don't, I mean, assuming you're saying yes, because that's, that's what we've, what has been communicated to us, that that was part of the process.
Yes, absolutely. And this will be a robust public process, start to finish. It's not something that's going to happen overnight. It's going to take time. Even the code amendments that we do twice a year, I can't tell you how much time I've spent on code amendments last couple of weeks trying to get code amendments ready for the fall, and that's on a much smaller scale. But yes, it's going to be a heavy lift and we'll be certainly engaging with all of you as well as the staff that is so knowledgeable and familiar with our codes in Cobb County and of course, our citizens' businesses.
Thank you.
Commissioner Burl, did you have something else to add?
No.
Commissioner Sheffield?
Thank you. Thank you Jessica for everything that you've been doing with the UDC. And, you know, you and I have had conversations and I had a little bit of sticker shock with the, with the cost of the study and mostly because there wasn't another proposal for me to make a comparison. But in conversations, you actually brought down that price considerably. And in further conversation with you, this type of study is over one million dollars. So kudos to you for nearly cutting that in half. But with respect to staff, there are some key positions to which we will have new staff members, like the Economic Development Director, for example, that may not be as familiar with Cobb County or our codes as some of our more institutional employees. So, so there is going to be that newness there. And I think with the scope of what we're attempting to do, I mean, we're just a large county and we continue to grow. So we want to make sure that we get it right the first time, and obviously that isn't a knock against staff at all. We understand that you guys are dealing with being short-staffed, you have more work than you have hours and that you have people. But the downside in trying to take on a project of this size with your limited staff, I just don't think that it will be done as efficiently as it could be if there was a outside consultant. And again, this is nothing against staff, obviously, but I mean, the, the reality of it all is that you have more work than you have people. And I think that this should, should be given, prioritized with, with a consulting company. But I am encouraged that staff will be involved, that there will be in community involvement, engagement, obviously it will come before the board. So staff will have a hand in this, but you just won't be leading the charge.
Right. And you know, the Evergreen study was mentioned early, earlier. There was a consultant there, but it was still a heavy lift on the part of staff and human resources, the human resources team, man, just the work that they've done on that. And this will be similar. I will be the county's project manager on this.
Right.
We'll have a technical committee that'll include staff, will include John Peterson as the zoning division manager, it'll include Stormwater, DOT, all of those reviewing entities, all the people who currently are reviewing our plans and what have you as they come in, and also reviewing all the zoning requests. That will be the committee that's looking at every single thing the consultant brings forward. So yes, it's still, it's still going to be a huge demand on staff time to move this project forward, but it's important. Yes.
Thank you. That's all I had meant.
Is there any additional discussion? I'll call the question. The motion passes three-two with Commissioners Burl and Gamble in opposition.
Thank you all.
We are now to our second public comment.
Matt Stegall.
Stegall, I believe.
Hello Chairwoman and Commissioners. I had notes, I had something I wanted to talk about, but-
State your name, I know it was just stated.
Oh, sorry. My name's Matt Stegall.
Thank you.
I've been living here for more than thirty years. And yeah, I had notes, I had a topic I really wanted to discuss tonight, but here in some public comment, just some conversation around certain things. First off, I want to thank the Commissioners for voting to increase staff. I think that's a historic moment for this county and helps move us forward. And even though it's still not quite a comfortable living wage, it does make a statement to, you know, people who live and work here, that we do support our staff and want them to also be successful in this county. In addition to that, I know there's a lot of conversation to a DEI position, and I think it's no secret, I am a middle-aged white male, and it took me way too long, and I grew up in Cobb County, and it took me way too long for me to realize the privilege that that came with. And I look at my life and the things I have learned and the progress I have made individually and the parallels that has come with the county as well. And I hear things like the DEI position of, you know, like, we can't support it, or we equate it to, you know, signing up for public comment and stuff like that. And I do think that this county does have, it has passed, we've come a long way, and I think that position is another signal to both everyone who is here and outside of the county, that we take that concern seriously and that everyone is going to be considered equally and no matter where you're from, you know, who you are, any of that, that that is a priority for this county. And I think moving forward, that that is a priority, that it is, I mean, for some it might just be a position, but it's a signal to everyone who lives here, works here, is thinking about moving here, that, that we take those concerns seriously. And I think, you know, I wanted to change my complete topic of, I wanted to speak tonight to that because I think my voice has been important in sharing that. And I, you know, I don't know if it means anything or not, but it is something that is very important to me as I continue to live here and will hopefully raise my child here, that, that is something that we prioritize and look at and move forward with. And we can look ten, twenty, thirty years from now and see the greater progress that we have continued to make. And that is my hope, that something like that would, would help to, to influence that and make sure that those changes happen. That speech was a lot faster than my other speech, so I will give two minutes back, and I know it's a late night, so everyone have a good night.
Thank you.
Donald Barth. Donald Barth. Craig Harford.
My name's Craig Harford, and I'm going to pick up where I left off. And the one thing that just happened when you were talking about hiring a consultant because you didn't have enough staff, well, you just voted, you're going to vote, got more staff coming, so I don't get that one. But back to why we got, why you need seventeen dollars now, is because gasoline went from three thirteen in 2021 to four dollars and forty cents in June. Now, it's backed off a little, but this is something that's been going on through Reagan, Bush, Clinton, GW Bush. But the thing is, we've never seen energy at this level, and the Fed does not count food or energy in inflation. Yet, you know, when Trump was in office 2019, the Fed rate was two-six, two-point-one-six. In 2020, it was one-point-five-five. And it was, this year was one-point-five-eight. And they just moved it a little. And, and all this, all this housing that got bought up, you know, it's basically because the Fed rates really, you know, one-point-five. I mean, it was higher in 1929. You know, it was at six. And, and the highest it's ever been was just under seventeen percent in 1981, and gas was one-nineteen. But that crashed it. I mean, there are so many variables in this. And the other thing you got to watch out too, is that T-bill rates and, and bond rates are going up. Now, that's how they suck the money out of the, you know, stock market and everything else, because that's a sure thing for people that have money. And that's what's going to nail you in within the year, or next year. Because we've never seen energy do this and a housing bubble happen within a two-year span? I mean, it's unheard of. And one of you was telling me it was because of REITs. Well, that's the stock market. Well, the stock market, what was going on in the housing bubble in 2000 before eight was people were pulling equity out of their houses, the fund firm rate was one and two percent, and, and they were throwing it in the stock market. And that's how you do the bubble. I mean, that's how they're all connected. But the thing that always pops the bubble is when you spike energy. And I told you about the head of the Fed telling the financial analyst, the head of Katrina, that energy could go up. Well, yeah, they went out, and then you heard Kramer on TV and everybody's buying energy stocks. But it only moved energy in that timeframe from a dollar eighty-eight to three-twenty-seven. It was not a great increase as what we just had right now in June. So that's what you got to watch out for. I mean, yeah, you got to take the money when you got it in the mill rate, but you should bank it. Those bond rates are going to go up. I know what Georgia Fund wants, puts their money in T-bills, Fannie, Freddie, but the Fannie Freddie ones are what were blowing the bubble, and it would, that's what's going to kill us. And you got to be, when I worked, the last time this thing happened, and it was in seventy-five, we went off the gold standard and that's, in seventy-four, gas was thirty-nine cents. Fed rates was eight-seven-seven. And I went to work for Fulton County, and I got a seat of position, food stamps, and took the merit test, and I get there and it's women's social workers. But by nineteen, you know, after Ford and with Nelson Rockefeller in there, around seventy-six, seventy-seven, gasoline went to fifty-nine cents. The Fed funds rate was at five-point-five, and unemployment shot up. And that's when Fulton County De-facts, we had Methodist ministers, older guys, we had aeronautical engineers, couldn't get a job at Lockheed, we had everybody there. And it was, and it was because they couldn't get a job anywhere else, and yet that's going to happen here real soon.
Kenton Fleming. Kenton Fleming. Chairwoman, unfortunately, that's the last of our public comment this evening.
Thank you Bill, appreciate that. With that, we are moving on to Commissioner's public address. I'll begin with Commissioner Gamble.
Thank you. And before we start with my slides Brad, I'd like to address my attendance to the Evergreen work session. Prior to scheduling some family business out of town and booking a flight, I had checked with the county manager and the county clerk to ensure that there was not a work session scheduled for that date. I was told there was not a work session, so I went ahead and booked a flight to go out of town and leave after our morning meeting. It was just about a week before the scheduled meeting with Evergreen that it got put on the book for the one-thirty session. So yes, while I was here for part of that session, I did have to leave due to a conflict in my schedule unbeknownst to me, but I did check prior to making those arrangements so that I could tend to my county responsibilities. I did also watch the rest of the hearing off-site on YouTube, since we have that option. The issue here is the fact that we often have discussions, we have work sessions, but then we have conversations behind the doors, which is called walking the halls. And prior to the chairman's address to the chamber, those conversations had not been held with the majority of the board, as I was told. And so that is where, you know, I will continue to have an issue with transparency, because again, by making an announcement, it puts a board, the board in a very bad position if we disagree with something that has already been put out there without having the conversation. So that is where that comes from. Thank you. With that, on to my slides. Cobb Elections Office will be closed tomorrow, Wednesday, July seventh through Friday, July twenty-ninth, as the office is moving to a new location. Elections will reopen on Monday, August first at its new location at nine-nine-five Roswell Street in Marietta. Seniors fifty-five and over, once a month, West Cobb walkers meet up and explore different parts of our county. This month, they will walk some of the trails at Soap Creek, which is located at thirty-seven-sixty Paper Mill Road from nine-thirty to eleven tomorrow, Wednesday, July twenty-seventh. You can register for the walk by the QR code displayed on the screen. Next, you can learn how to plant and harvest the best tasting blueberries and watch a demonstration in making diabetic-friendly lemon blueberry bars. Sign up for Culinary Creations Blueberries on Wednesday, July twenty-seventh from one to two P.M. at the North Cobb Senior Center located at thirty-nine-hundred South Senior Center, located at 3900 South Main Street in Acworth. There is a cost of $3 per person, and to register, you can use the QR code, or you can call 770-975-7740. And lastly, just last month, we had recognized William Bill Farah for winning the National Tennis Championship. He went down to Texas over the July 4th weekend and won the Huntsman World Senior Games. He will be going to Utah to go for the international title this time. So best of luck to Bill in his endeavors with table tennis. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson.
All right, from the office, Thursday, we have the Environmental Justice Agreement Workshop, which is really a culmination of all the meetings over the last year, just listening to residents, listening to business owners, listening to different organizations, those that believe in environmental progress, those that have concerns about environmental progress, all in between. And we try to capture all of it. And so at this workshop, think of it as an open house, where you get a chance to explore all of the different opportunities. I can tell you that the overall goal of the Environmental Justice Agreement is to create a list of policies, procedures, and investments that the county can make in order to improve, empower residents with information on water, soil, and air. So it's pretty, it's to the county's scope, but it's looking at where those opportunities are, both creative and that are creative opportunities and ones that are really low-hanging fruit, but for us to really collaborate, pull together, and hopefully as a board, so as District Two will be sharing all this information. And then I'll be sharing that with my fellow commissioners and the chairwoman to consider as something that we can partake in as a county. So the event is scheduled for Thursday at Sewell Mill Library. Just come in, make your comments, leave your sticky notes on whichever things you're most interested in. And afterwards, there's also a digital survey that will be available for those that cannot attend in person. And that's out of the office. Community updates. Parks, the fishing rodeo, it's the annual fishing rodeo, open to children ages 3 to 16. The trophies will be awarded for the five biggest fish overall. You can register at cobbcounty.org/parks, visit the QR code. And this is for District Two, Hyde Farm Park. And yeah, oh, that's July 9th. It's July 30th is what it actually showed on the website, so I think it copied incorrectly.
District Four is the last one.
Okay, then, never mind. But definitely this, Cobb PD Bookbag Palooza, appreciate the help, guys. Kids Care has teamed up with Cobb PD once again to collect school supplies and book bags for families in need during their Bookbag Palooza. They'll host a big event on July 30th at the Cobb Civic Center, 11 a.m. to 7 p.m. with bounce houses, games, clowns, train rides, and more. For more information on the items needed, you can call Sergeant Bullis at 404-245-6771. And certainly, there are some drop-off spots all the way up until that date. They're also listed here, but there's a flyer that's on different social media streams that we have. So precinct, well, there we go, that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Gamberl.
Thank you. Last Saturday, we had the fishing rodeo in District Three at our new Ebenezer Downs Park. And we had five-place winners. Shawn McGuinness was first, Maximus Pathamayung was second, Jackson Woodruff, third. Fourth place was Matthew Martinez, and fifth place was Landon Perry. And he is the son of one of our water system employees, Michael Perry. And I'd like to say thank you to all the parents and kids that came out, and a special thanks to Natural Resources Team from the state. They did an awesome job to Mackie Temple, Brett Alferson, and Cobb Parks Ops Team. The park looked amazing, and we caught some big fish that day. I didn't, but the kids did. And also, thanks to Keith Weaver and Michael Sellers with the Georgia DNR for providing support and technical expertise. And lastly, thanks to all the volunteers and participants for making this event so special. There's one more in Commissioner Sheffield's district on this coming Saturday, July 30th, from 9:00 to 11:00 at the Fur Family Park on Old West Side Road. So there's still a chance for the boys to come out. We missed them at Ebenezer. Last week, we celebrated the Mandate 59 Police Class, Recruit Class, and we'd like to say congratulations to them for their successful completion of the Cobb County Public Safety Training Academy. These officers were pinned and then sworn in by Chief Ann Hoosier. Today, these officers are on the road with their respective field training officers for field training, firsthand on-the-job training in the field and outside of the classroom. Congratulations, Mandate 59. Tomorrow night, we are, DOT and I are hosting a virtual public information open house at 6:30. It's an introduction to the Noonday Creek Trail Extension. And it is virtual, and there's a link to sign up if you want more information. You can also take the survey and register for the meeting. You can contact me or go to the link below on the transportation website. I've received a lot of calls today on this, of people that weren't aware and people that will be impacted. And so we will, I'm sure, have a lot to discuss tomorrow night. So get ready, Drew, we're coming. We'll have a big crowd. And I do appreciate the public letting me know that, you know, their concerns, because this is just the scoping project. So we want to hear from residents. National Night Out is coming, August 2nd, 6 to 9, at Jim Miller Park on Callaway Road. This is a great opportunity to see all the public safety police units. Canines will be there. And so we ask everybody to come out, talk to your favorite cop. And there's also a Job and Resource Expo on August 3rd, Wednesday, August 3rd, from 9:30 to 2:00 at the Switzer Library. It is a free event with local employers and organizations offering resources. And bring your resume or print one at the library. And there will be assistants, I'm told, too, on site. You just heard about Bookbag Palooza. Again, this year, all the precincts are receiving donations, so it'll be a great event on July 30th. And also, on August 19th, from 5:00 to 9:00 at Cowan Historic Hall in Acworth, the Cobb Veterans Memorial Foundation Board of Directors is hosting Concerts and Cocktails fundraising event. That's a Friday evening from 5:00 to 9:00 in Acworth. You can go to the website, cobbveteransmemorial.com for more information. And sign up for my newsletter. That's a picture from the rodeo, fishing rodeo. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sheffield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. While he's queuing that up, I just want to go on the record that I did meet with Bill Volkman in finance regarding the salary increase of $17 before the State of the County address.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Join me tomorrow evening at 7:00 p.m. for our monthly In-the-Zone Community Meeting. I will recap District Four's July zoning decisions and discuss August cases. Our monthly In-the-Zone Community Meetings provide a platform to ask questions and learn firsthand about zoning applications and potential development in your community. Please email didra.watts@cobbcounty.org for the meeting link. Hope to see you there. Our Second Annual Career Fair and Tenant Forum will be held this Saturday, July 30th, from 10 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. Join me, Cobb Works, and Goodwill as we partner with Amazon, the Atlanta Braves, the Marriott, UPS, Wellstar Health Systems, and many others for employment opportunities. Additional event highlights include Chief Magistrate Judge Brendan Murphy and his team will discuss tenants' rights. The Marietta Housing Authority and nonprofit agencies will be on-site to answer tenant-related questions. District Attorney Flynn Brody's Second Chance Desk Team will be in attendance for confidential discussions regarding criminal record expungements. Employers will conduct onsite interviews, so please be prepared with your resume and interview attire. Cobb Works will have a mobile office on-site to assist with resume writing if needed. You may join for the entire event or at any point during the 10 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. window. I look forward to seeing you on Saturday at the Cobb County Public Safety Police Training Academy, located at 2435 East West Connector in Austell. The First Christian Church of Mabelton in partnership with South Cobb Schools is hosting its annual school prayer walk on July 30th. Breakfast will be served at 8:30 a.m. at 878 Old Alabama Road in Mabelton. Prayer teams will disperse between 10 a.m. through 11:30 a.m. There will be four prayer teams to cover 14 schools in South Cobb. To join this initiative, contact Barry Smith, Executive Minister, at 404-421-3751, or at barry@fcc-m.com. The Austell Community Task Force is seeking support for their 21st Annual Back-to-School Jam. Last year, ACT provided aid to the Back-to-School Jam mission by distributing school kits to over 300 families in the local Austell and Mabelton communities. This year, with the help of community partners, they aim to continue their efforts. The organization is currently seeking donations. If you can, please donate before August 1st. For more information or to donate, email austellcommunitetaskforce@gmail.com. The last day of the annual fishing rodeo, Deidre's responsible for that, so. The last day of the annual fishing rodeo is Saturday, July 30th, at Fur Family Park, located at 4570 Old West Side Road in Powder Springs. The event is open to children ages 3 to 16 years old with a $5 fee per child. Trophies will be awarded for the five largest catches overall. If you want to join the fun, register at cobbcounty.org and select Cobb Parks and type the word "fishing" in the filter box. And finally, congratulations, I think Kimberly is still here, is she here? There she is in the back. Congratulations to Kimberly Lemley and Cobb County's Information Services Department for its recognition at the National Association of Counties 2022 Annual Conference. Cobb has been ranked fourth this year in the annual county survey award, a jump from its 10th-place spot last year. The survey, awarded by the Center for Digital Government and the National Association of Counties, recognizes counties with the best technology practices. Those practices include streamlining government services, encouraging collaboration, enhancing cybersecurity, and applying innovative and emergency technologies to county priorities. So congratulations again, Kimberly.
Thank you, Commissioner. Everyone, tonight has been a very long night, but it's been a good night. We've been able to do some transformative work here in the county, and I look forward to doing more as we continue to move our county forward for everyone. With that, have a good evening.